Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I will call this regular business meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. It is Monday, March 4th, 2024. Thank you to everybody for being here in the council chambers, and thank you, everybody watching online. We'll start our meeting as we always do. If you would, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all, and once again, welcome to everybody who is joining us this evening. Our first order of business tonight is to approve tonight's agenda. And council, this is what we have for tonight's agenda. Under introductory items, item 2.1, we'll be meeting a couple of new employees, and I think our park and rec department employees, so welcome to them. I'll be reading a proclamation regarding Women's History Month. The, uh, we'll have two updates and work plan presentations, one from our Creative Placemaking Commission, and second from our Advisory Board of Health. They will do their 2023 update and present to us their 2024 work plan. Item 2.5, we're going to get a public safety update from Chief Booker Hodges. He's with us this evening and is going to be providing a bit of information and update regarding public safety here in Bloomington. Uh, our consent business, Councilmember Muah has consent this evening. Thank you for doing that this evening. Item four, under hearings, resolutions, and ordinances, we've got nothing. We've got nothing on item four, hearings, resolutions, and ordinances. Under our organizational business, we've got a couple of short items. Item 5.1 is a draft term sheet review for the 700 American Boulevard project. And then the State Community Health Services Advisory Committee update. Councilmember Carter, I think, is going to be helping out with that presentation, looking forward to that. And we'll wrap up, as we always do, with our city council policy and issue update. Council, any corrections or additions to tonight's agenda? If not, I would move tonight's agenda as stated.
Second.
Got a motion and a second by Councilmember Loman to accept tonight's agenda as stated. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Thank you so very much. All right, and, uh, into our agenda, but before we get there, I want to welcome and thank Diane Kirby, who's sitting in as Acting City Manager this evening. Thank you so very much, and good to have you in, in, in the big chair here, and looking forward to the, uh, the advice and guidance you'll be providing with us. So thank you so very much for being here tonight. Item 2.1 tonight is our introduction of new employees. And as I mentioned, I think we've got two new employees from our park and rec department. Please.
Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for having us here tonight. You may feel a little bit of deja vu, because we were actually here about a year ago exactly, introducing these same two employees to you, but as part-time employees. So we are very...
Mommy!
Sorry. One second, buddy. Um, we're happy to now introduce them as full-time employees, and this little man is not the employee, unfortunately. But I am very happy to introduce Anthony DeBella.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you for allowing me to introduce myself. I am Anthony DeBella, Recreation Supervisor of Adult Sports and Outdoor Ice Rinks and Warming Houses. A little bit about myself, I was born and raised here in Bloomington. I went to Jefferson High School, class of 2011. I received a bachelor's degree from St. Cloud State University, then a master's from St. Mary's University. I'm a longtime sports official with baseball, and basketball is my main sports. I am a diehard Vikings fan. I have a wonderful wife at home and an almost two-year-old who keeps us busy with baby number two coming here in July. Uh, we have a great parks and recreation team with a lot of great ideas, and I look forward to working with them and showcasing those ideas to the residents of Bloomington. A little bit of fun fact, we just opened up adult sports registration for our sport leagues, um, strong numbers already, with the goal to keep improving those numbers every single year. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thanks for being here this evening. Thanks for your persistence, moving from a part-time position into a full-time position. I know that, uh, I've heard from a number of folks how highly they speak of you and, and others within the department who are moving from the part to the full-time position, and we're very glad to have you. So thanks so very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers. I'm here, I'm Jill Murphy, Creekside Manager, here to introduce Matt Cowell. He started off a year ago as well as a part-time recreation coordinator, and he has just done a really great job, uh, his first year. We're excited to see him grow in the position, um, as a full-time recreation supervisor now. So I'll let you tell, him tell a little bit about himself.
Good evening, Matt.
Mayor Bussie, uh, councilmembers, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to come up here and introduce myself tonight. Um, as they said before me, almost exactly a year ago, Anthony and I, Anthony and I were up here introducing ourselves as Recreation Program Coordinators. So I'm very excited to be back introducing myself as a Recreation Supervisor. Um, a little bit about me, I, uh, went to the University of Wisconsin La Crosse, where I earned a bachelor's degree in Recreation Management. Um, when I graduated in 2021, I worked for a handful of different cities across the metro, most recently being the, uh, city of Mendota Heights. Um, currently in my role, I, uh, office out of Creekside Community Center, where I oversee our adult, adaptive adult, and senior programs. Um, I have to say, the, the last year working here in Bloomington has been really awesome. Um, being able to not only work alongside our team here, but to learn from them during that year has been a really great experience for me. And, uh, looking into the future, I am very excited to continue to work with, um, not only the, the awesome folks over at Creekside, but the awesome team here at Civic Plaza to continue to offer some amazing programs for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here this evening, and, uh, thanks for your commitment at Creekside. I know we, uh, there's, there's a lot going on there, and, uh, hear a lot from a lot of residents about the, the programming there and the, the one-on-one contact, the, the personal touch that you folks put to your work. So thank you so very much for that, and, uh, appreciate it, because they're, they're a group that, uh, we need to take care of, and I'm glad you're able to, to help us with that and to provide the services to them. So, thank you.
Absolutely. I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Matt and Anthony, welcome. Thanks for being here this evening, and, uh, members of the community, if you're out and about, or if you see them, please do say hello to them and, uh, welcome them to the city of Bloomington. So thanks very much. Item 2.2 on our agenda is a proclamation for Women's History Month, and I'm going to come down to the podium and make the proclamation. As I mentioned, item 2.2 is a proclamation for Women's History Month, and I, I want to state that this was brought forward, we have a relatively new employee resource group here in the city of Bloomington, started in 2022, a Women's Employee Resource Group. And I don't know, I, I know there's, it started with four people, and, uh, it's now blossomed up to more than 60 active members. Would you like to join me? It's a perfect, that's how we'd like to do this, and I'll even turn the microphone over to you if need be, so, all right. This is a proclamation. Please do, yes. Get, get in the camera shot, you gotta get in the camera shot here. There you go. Women's History Month, March 2024. Whereas, Women's History Month originated in 1981, when the United States Congress passed a resolution authorizing and requesting the President proclaim the week beginning March 7th, 1982, as Women's History Week. And whereas, after being petitioned by the National Women's History Project, Congress passed a resolution that designated the month of March 1987 as Women's History Month. And whereas, since 1995, United States Presidents have issued annual proclamations designating the month of March as Women's History Month. And whereas, these proclamations celebrate the contributions women have made to the United States and recognize the specific achievements women have made over the course of American history in a variety of fields. And whereas, Black, Indigenous, and Women of Color, undocumented women, women with disabilities, women with children, queer and transgender women, and women who live at the intersection of these identities, offer unique and valuable perspectives and contributions. And whereas, the city endeavors to create a culture that values the contributions of all employees and provides equal opportunity for professional development and career advancement. And whereas, in 2022, a City Employee Resource Group formed to support employees who identify as women and their allies. And whereas, the Women's Employee Resource Group brings together individuals in an inclusive way to provide resources and support for women, create awareness around issues women face, and make a positive impact for women in our organization and community. And whereas, female persons make up 51% of Bloomington's population, yet represent 33% of the city's full-time workforce. And whereas, the Women's Employee Resource Group has and will continue to offer recommendations on action steps to support, retain, and recruit female leaders to the city of Bloomington's workforce. And now therefore, I, Mayor Tim Bussie, do hereby proclaim March 2024 as Women's History Month in Bloomington, and invite the community to celebrate the vital role of women in American history and explore resource, historical resources at women'shistorymonth.gov, dated this fourth day of March 2024. So, Melissa, I know that you were the initial sponsor of this organization.
Uh, executive sponsor.
Executive sponsor. And I'm, I'm, I'm going to step out of the way, just turn over to the mic to whoever would like to speak, so.
Go ahead, go ahead. Communication's first.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. I just wanted to say that I'm happy to accept the proclamation on behalf of the other officers of the Women's Employee Resource Group and the rest of our membership. We are growing, um, as you mentioned, with 60 members. Um, and the, the Employee Resource Groups are a wonderful contribution to the city organization. I think we should be very proud of them. They have built important connections across the organization, and, um, when employees thrive, the, the whole organization benefits. So, um, just wanted to say happy Women's History Month to everyone.
Anything? No? I am going to give you the official proclamation. Oh, wait, that's the script? There's the official proclamation. We're gonna get a picture. Hope you shine out. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. The next two items on our agenda, as I mentioned, are 2023 updates and 2024 work plans for our Creative Placemaking Commission and our Advisory Board of Health. I've mentioned each time we've done one of these, that our city charter requires the city to bring forward not only, uh, reports from the previous year, but work plans for the coming year for all of our boards and commissions. I think it's an important way to, uh, to make sure that the work, uh, that our boards and commissions reflects what the city is trying to accomplish and, and aligns so very nicely with the work of this council and the work of our strategic planning process, but also a great opportunity to explain to the community what's going on. Because I think a lot of folks hear a lot of things about the Creative Placemaking Commission or the Advisory Board of Health without really understanding what they're doing, and this is a great opportunity to do so. So I'm very happy to welcome tonight Alejandro Palenca, who's the Director of our Creative Placemaking Commission, and Jackie Rosenbusch, the Chair of the, uh, the Commission. Good evening and welcome, looking forward to the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers. Thank you again for having us here. Again, my name is Alejandra Palenca, I'm Director of Creative Placemaking.
And I'm Jackie Rosenbusch, and I'm the Chair. Nice to see you tonight.
So tonight, we wanted to provide a little bit of an overview of some 2023 projects and events, and some highlights from our 2024 work plan. Just make sure I know how to advance this. Is that better?
And while we're getting it to work, I, I love this picture, because I was at this event and loved how cool this was, uh, as they taught everybody to dance, and what I especially loved is that I'm not in this picture.
We could have found one, you would have been on there, but... This was a creative happy hour event that we did in the past with Malamania, a band in the back, in the background with a salsa dance instructor. A lot of fun. Let me see if I can do it all. Or do you want me to just tell you? Because this isn't working, I don't think. Okay. Okay, thank you. So the South Loop Creative Placemaking Plan, uh, vision and goals have really guided our, our work plan and our strategies over the years. Um, so our vision is that our sustained efforts will establish the South Loop as a distinctive destination known for welcoming people and using the air to transform the neighborhood physically, socially, and culturally. Next. And our goals include urbanism, animation, involvement, identity, leadership, and investment. Next. Our commission also participated in a practical visioning workshop, and we asked ourselves, given what we know, what elements do we want to see in the next three years? And we agree to focus our efforts on initiatives that would support elements such as grand and colorful places to play and welcoming and thriving green spaces. Our work has been focused in the South Loop District, but we are now working towards expanding our efforts citywide, which I will touch on again shortly. Next. So now I'll go into a few of our 2023 projects and events. Next. We offered a Making It Public workshop in January to local artists. It was facilitated by Forecast Public Art with the goal to grow local artist capacity to work on public art and community-based arts projects. Next. We also did some citywide, uh, initiatives that were outside of the South Loop District, one of which was our Hometown Poetry Program. And we embarked on, uh, installing four signs with poems by Bloomington residents in three parks. Next. We also stamped 10 of 14 stamps in sidewalks, and, uh, we also created a website page where there's an interactive map where you can see all of the poems and the locations. Next. Another project outside of the South Loop District was our work with small businesses at the intersection of Old Chalk P and Old Cedar to install some facade improvement projects, such as a custom bench and custom window decals. And we are excited to sponsor Bloomington's first Juneteenth event, which was held on June 19th at Kennedy High School, and included music, performances, food trucks, history boards, and more. And it was really an effort led and organized by community members. Next. One of our priorities is ongoing support of the Small Business Center, and this summer we supported juxtaposition arts as they use creative placemaking as a strategy for engagement during the design process. We partnered with them on an open house held in August to connect more with the neighbors and, and with attendees to get more feedback on the space plans. We also partnered with Minnesota Valley National Wildlife Refuge, Huayas, Latinas, and Indigenous Roots on the Latino Conservation Week Festival, which was held at the Refuge Visitor Center in July, and this event included food trucks, performances, arts activity, and a mural was created onsite by Pablo Calaca and Daniela Biancini, which is now displayed at the Visitor Center. And this was one of three Bloomington events, which was affiliated with the Metrowide Wakpa Triennial Art Festival, and that was recently named as the number five best new festival in the country by USA Today, 10 Best Readers' Choice Travel Award Contest. Next. We hosted an Indigenous History of Bloomington presentation here at Civic Plaza in August with speakers Dr. Kate Bean and Peter DeCarlo, and 96.8% of attendees reported that they learned something new from that presentation. Next. Significant site work was accomplished at the new South Loop Community Garden, including garden plots and the installation of cyanotype banners, co-designed by Sheila Novak with Dakota artist Erin Genia. These cyanotypes or sunprint share the story of the land, the, honoring the sun, water, and the histories of the significant Minnesota River Valley, the life it supports, and value to Indigenous communities. Next. Some additional highlights this year include an installation of a sculpture by artist teams Safa Sarvistani and Shirin Garashi at Bloomington Central Station Park. We worked closely with the Planning Department on the mural code ordinance and a new murals, policies, and procedures document. We saw continued private investment, including a Bloomington Ferry mural at Carben 31 by Tyler and Ashley Voorhees, commissioned by McGough. We hired Creative, uh, Catherine Murray as our new Creative Placemaking Specialist, and we developed a citywide Creative Placemaking Plan Request for Proposals. Expanding creative placemaking citywide was identified by the community as a part of our strategic initiative in this, in the Bloomington Tomorrow Together Strategic Plan to advance the strategic outcome of a connected, welcoming community. So this plan will really align with the city's strategic plan goals and build off of our previous South Loop Creative Placemaking Plan. Next. Now I'll just do some highlights from our upcoming 2024 work plan. Next. We'll be finalizing site details and open our South Loop Community Garden with an opening celebration on Saturday, June 29th. Uh, it is open for reservations. We've filled about 12 of the 35 plots so far, so I encourage people to sign up if they're interested. We're partnering with, with Parks and Recreation Department on a Sunday-Funday music series at Bloomington Central Station Park with three planned in each month, so one in June, July, and August. And we're also working, um, to host the On The One Festival at Bloomington Central Station Park in July or August. We're also partnering again with the Minnesota Valley National Wildlife Refuge and Huayas Latinas on a Latina Conservation Festival, which will be held on Saturday, July 20th, and includes similar items, including nature education, demonstrations, activities, and more. Next. We're partnering with Parks and Recreation again on a potential pond house art installation, and we'll be working really closely with their Dakota Advisory Committee, putting out a call for art in 2024. And we continue to work with artists Sandy Speeler and Tara Perron on a potential future art installation at the Old Cedar Avenue Bridge Trailhead that will reflect the importance of water, natural resources, and the Indigenous history of the area. And the previous guided activity that was held here last year will really help inform and serve as an inspiration for this future installation. Next. We continue to plan for exterior art projects at the Small Business Center in the South Loop. Next. And a big initiative, of course, this year will be the development of our citywide Creative Placemaking Master Plan. We'll be working with consultants Forecast Public Art, and the process will include a really thorough engagement effort through the summer. Uh, we'll be working with a lot of local artists with potential celebratory event towards the end of that process, and a final plan in December. Creative placemaking and public art processes and installations have the potential to build community resilience, provide connection, add to the livability factor, support the local economy, and support entrepreneurs, specifically artists. Minneapolis-St. Paul, Bloomington was actually ranked sixth among 20 most arts vibrant large communities in the nation in 2023. So we also wanted to take a moment to thank the multiple artists, creatives, and arts organizations who contribute to the vibrancy of our city. Thank you to the mayor and council. With that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you for the presentation and the recap of, uh, last year and your plans for this year. The expanding at citywide, I, I think it's very exciting, and I think everybody is excited about it. So thank you for the effort that's going into that, because I know it's no small task, and it's gonna change the way you look at things a little bit, I'm sure, and appreciate your willingness to kind of stretch on this one, because it is, it is a big, it is a big task. But, I mean, ultimately, great cities have great art, and this is part of it. And we have the performing arts, we have the, the visual arts, and we have the creative placemaking, I think, just to make all the things that make Bloomington unique and rank highly nationally in terms of an arts vibrant community, so it's exciting to hear about. So thank you so much. Council questions on this? Councilmember DeLisandro.
I'm curious, uh, thank you for being here, by the way. Nice to see you. Um, I, I'm curious about the, um, the master plan. Do you have any core principles defined yet in terms of, um, what you're either, you know, hoping to focus on with the consultant in terms of getting that feedback from the community? And, uh, what, what, um, where do, where do you think that you might have some challenges that, you know, either we can be helpful in terms of getting out the word, or, you know, we can, uh, provide some additional resources or whatever for it? I'd love to hear more about that. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember DeLisandro. You know, I think we're very fortunate in that we were able to start our work with, in a smaller scale, with the South Loop Creative Placemaking Plan. It served us very well and served as a really important tool and guide for us, so I think we'll look at that just for inspiration and guidance on some of the major kind of goal vision in terms of, uh, priorities and elements that we want to focus on. Um, when we're working with Forecast Public Art, a big part of this is we really wanted to make sure that the community had a very strong voice in developing what those core principles would be. I think certainly a challenge is now the great scale. Um, how do we, how do we prioritize projects in terms of geography, in terms of types of projects? What are going to be the most important types of things people want to see? Do they want to, excuse me, do they want to focus on more experiential type of things or permanent public art projects? Um, so just really getting that feedback from people will be really important. I'll let Jackie expand on that if you have anything to add from your perspective.
Yeah, I think that Forecast is gonna do a great job really meeting people where they are and making sure that all the voices are heard. So any support from you guys as far as space to accommodate those kinds of conversations, I think will be helpful.
Great. Thank you.
Additional questions? Councilmember Loman?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, maybe more so a comment and, uh, maybe some advice. Uh, you know, you had mentioned, uh, you know, we see this, this long list of accomplishments. Um, and, uh, one of the things that I struggle with is, you know, we know the importance of creative placemaking when it comes to economic development and so many other things that you mentioned there, connecting different folks from across the community and different communities and those partnerships. Um, how do we, you know, for the general public that's looking at this, how do we communicate that, that message and, and the worth of this? Because I think so many times that when people, uh, see this, it's, you know, kind of the second row or the backseat of the, uh, you know, of, of, of what's happening. And I just, that's one of the things I struggle with, is just in terms of, I've gone to many conferences and they talk about this, and the communities that are, that are doing well, they're doing, uh, these types of things in this area, and so anything you can help with that. You know, I don't want to put you on the spot, but, uh, that's just something that I'm, I'm struggling with when I, when I see this.
Thank you, Councilmember Loman. It's certainly something that we can identify with and ask ourselves as well. Um, I think the nice thing about this plan is it gives us a larger audience to direct our efforts with in terms of, of a master plan for the whole city, so something that we have communicated with the consultant is our desire for really great communication in terms of even just describing what creative placemaking is as part of our engagement efforts and defining it, because it is jargon, and not all people are familiar with what it means and the benefits that it is. So as part of our engagement plan, we'll embed that within our communication strategies. Um, we're also working on a communication plan just to think about how we use social media, our communication channels to talk about the work, to celebrate the work in a better, more robust way. Um, I think that when you're thinking about, you know, how do you, how do you explain this and the impact, it's certainly a mix of qualitative and quantitative metrics. So one of the things that we've also asked our consultant to help us with is some metrics that we can track over time that are within our capacity, um, to track, to kind of determine some, some of those metrics over years. We have a few reports and things that we've looked to in the past for metrics, but I think we can do a better job on kind of expanding that and tracking how, what the impact, even though sometimes it's causation, sometimes it's correlation, um, I think it'll help us to have some of those metrics on hand so that we'd be consistently tracking and looking at things, um, and how they're helping our city.
Anything further, Councilmember Loman? Councilmember Rivas?
I'm just curious, um, what is, what is exactly Latino conservation? I've never heard that term before until I read it a few days ago, so.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Rivas. Um, so Latino Conservation Week is a national effort by... effort by, you know, the Wildlife Refuge works with their Fish and Wildlife Services Department on this. It's a strategy just to celebrate and acknowledge the connection that Latino families and people have to nature, and it's a way to welcome them into different public areas like the National Wildlife Refuge, for example. So it's a nationwide effort, and our friends at the Minnesota Valley National Wildlife Refuge participate in it on an annual basis. Typically, it's held in July. This year, I think they're changing it to September, but because of the timing worked really well for us as a summer event, in July, we're going to be probably renaming it, so it probably won't be affiliated with the National Latino Week Conservation Week, but we still want to find ways to connect Latinos' families to welcome them into public nature spaces.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, additional questions? Hearing then, council, I would look for a motion to approve the Creative Placemaking Commission 2024 work plan and accept the 2023 update on their work.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Carter, second by Councilmember Lohman to approve the Creative Placemaking Commission 2024 work plan and accept their 2023 update. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Thank you for the update. And Chair Rosenbusch, if you could share with the rest of the commission our thanks for the work that goes on and to welcome your new board members. I think you've got new commission members coming on board and welcome them as well. But thank you, and continue the good work. We greatly appreciate it.
Thanks so much.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Item two point four on our agenda is the annual report and the 2024 work plan of the Advisory Board of Health. We've got Dr. Nick Kelly and Andrea Puckett, who is the incoming chair of the Advisory Board of Health, who are going to present this evening. Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I'll do a recap of what happened in 2023. Apologies, Star Sage was not able to be here tonight. Just a reiteration of the Advisory Board of Health really is that appointed board by council to really provide some of that public health guidance and support. They help support two different divisions, so environmental health and public health within the city of Bloomington, as you're the community health board guiding the health of the city. This gives you a rundown of our board members. We have a very robust board with some incredible public health and medical and community expertise in our community. Go to the next one. And then myself, Nivo, Linda Rizki-Lundian are the staff support, and we have Councilmember Carter as our primary rep for Shack. Meeting dates. We don't meet twice during the summer, but every other month we're there. If we go to the next one. We had a very busy year, learning an awful lot. There's an awful lot going on that helped inform this work. And so you can see while there is a strong public health staff participation, we also had some very knowledgeable speakers from across the city, from environmental health, the assistant city manager, our city clerk, community development director, and assistant port authority administrator. We did a lot of learning this year, learning a lot about Bloomington Forward. That top bullet point was regular updates on opioid work with the work group. We had a member as part of our active transportation work that you've heard a lot about from Public Works. And then we also have two members that are actively participating in the Bloomington Housing Action Teamwork Group. They also saw a lot of updates about different things happening in the city that impact health. So one of those, you just heard about the Small Business Center and the design. We talked about the Small Business Center too, and just some of the ways that can innovate and change health in the community. As usual, we had a lot of work on environmental health, understanding what was going on in the community, the trends, and the board picked Food Safety Award winners that are given out at the Diamond Service Awards. Go to the next one. They had some good discussion about what we learned during COVID-19 and some after-action planning and our next steps associated with that. And there's been a lot of conversations on climate change and mental health, and just some of the realities that the community is facing as the board's navigating what's going on with student and adult mental health and trying to prepare for that. And then we talked a bit about cannabis, trying to prepare the best we can for what we anticipate to be a busy board year on cannabis. Excellent. Some of the external partners that we had, we had some pretty good conversations with the school district. The board happened to be the first external body that the school district presented some of their mental health work that the council is well familiar with. And then we, our joint meeting with Edina and Richfield, we had some really robust discussions with the Hennepin County Adult Mental Health Board and some of their leadership and trying to understand how the board can participate in that prevention work of mental health. Excellent. I'll turn it over to Andrea to talk about what they're going to do in the future.
Great. Thank you for having us this evening. As Nick mentioned, the previous chair-elect will be moving into the chair role this upcoming year. So I'm excited to update you on our work plan upcoming. Go to the next slide. So Nick kind of covered this a little bit, but obviously the purpose of the board is really to do research and evaluation, to really understand what's happening in the city of Bloomington, to help share that information, and when applicable, make a recommendation for action as well. Next slide. So those actions might come in terms of a no vote or no formal recommendation. That could be in the form of a research and report, which is primarily what we spent time on this past year, and then obviously studying comment as well, which we did also this past year. The next slide goes over where we hope to be next year when we come here, very much so looking to create focus within the board on a couple of particular areas so that we might be able to evaluate and make a recommendation to city council next year. We also do intend to do the last item on here as well, which is supporting more within the broader community. So we are looking for events that we can participate in to hopefully, again, connect with the community and really be able to have an impact in year as well. Next slide. So the work plan for 2024, we've really tried to prioritize a couple of particular areas and then other areas that we will continue to keep a pulse on and understand what's happening so that we might be able to pull those into potentially priorities in 2025. So the couple of areas that you will see on here listed many times in the work plan is going to be cannabis, as Nick had mentioned. This is an area that city council had come to us this past year for review on some initial policy. We do anticipate that maybe there is more coming our way, and then more broadly, obviously, as this is something new that we are now dealing with in our community via legislation that passed this past year, we do want to become educated on this and help to advise where applicable on policy. The other primary focus will be on mental health. That really came in alignment with what the city council staff, or sorry, the city staff are doing in terms of a mental health focus this upcoming year. We also were very compelled by the Bloomington Public School update on youth mental health and substance abuse as well. And so those are areas that we do want to really focus on this upcoming year. Other areas that we will continue to keep a pulse on would really be around kind of climate and environmental change. Opioid work group, we have participants in the Bloomington Housing Action Team. We also have participation in that as well. And then we do look forward to helping to support anything around the Community Health and Wellness Center as well, as those needs might come up. Within our actual work plan, we obviously have gotten through January and February. As we look into March, April, May, we're hitting on most of these topics. In May, we will meet again with Edina and Richfield as well, with a focus on cannabis within that meeting. This past year, we also met with them, and it was very informative and helpful to learn what other communities are doing, looking kind of at similar topics and how they approach them. If we go to the next slide, we'll go into the second half of the year. So again, kind of going through a lot of the same general updates, but you will see, again, mental health cannabis listed on here several times. We will move into January and February. We did also approve agendas for those meetings. Those meetings are really kind of hitting on those key topics again, revisiting what we've done throughout the year, formulating a recommendation, and then also coming up with a 2025 work plan. So that will be kind of the focus as we head into the year here. I think the next slide is for questions, if you have any for us.
Well, thank you much. Thanks for the update and thanks for the plan for the coming year. I did have one question regarding the May meeting that you mentioned with Edina and Richfield on cannabis. Is that with the elected officials? Is that with other staff members in those two cities? Who exactly is that with?
Mayor, councilmembers, that would be, we do it with the Edina Health Commission and the Richfield Advisory Board of Health. So those three boards, or two boards at commission meeting, and we have been able to get some experts from the University of Minnesota's Cannabis Research Center, their newly formed center, to come in and really talk about, hopefully recap what we learned in the legislative session and some of the best practices and cutting-edge work with some of their work they're doing on equity and policy.
Great. After that meeting and after what you go through there, I would hope we could see you back sometime over the summer with an update on what you've learned and basically the same presentation to the city council. I think that would be very helpful. Thank you. Council, additional questions here? No questions of the council? Counsel, I think it was inadvertently left off, but we are going to approve this. I would look for a motion to approve the Advisory Board of Health 2023 Annual Report and their 2024 work plan.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Carter to approve the Advisory Board of Health 2023 Annual Report and 2024 Work Plan. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Thanks much for spending time with us this evening. Thanks for the good work that you do. And if you could share that with the rest of the board, it would be greatly appreciated. So thanks so very much. We look forward to seeing you again soon. Thank you. Our final introductory item of the evening is item two point five, and this is a public safety update by our police chief, Booker T. Hodges, with an update on public safety here in the city of Bloomington. Good evening, Chief. Welcome.
Good evening. Mike, are you doing my slides? All right. First, before I get started, I just wanted to say thank you to the mayor and Jamie. We all know that tragically on February eighteenth, three Burnsville's first responders lost their lives in the line of duty, and it does not go unnoticed by me or officers or their families that you all came to the funeral and that you all sent the department a message. So I just wanted to convey that, that that's something that is really important to us and then also to the council for approving the money for overtime so we could cover shifts in Burnsville along with the fire department. This was a tragic event, and one of the officers happened to be one of my students at Northwestern. So this is something that's going to be felt in our community and the Burnsville community for a considerable amount of time. So I just thought I'd say that. All right, let's get to the update. All right. So first and foremost, always talk about our core value at the Bloomington Police Department, what there's respect demonstrated through our compassionate and honest service, and that's our shared value with our community. Next slide, please. All right, staffing. This is where we're at in our sworn ranks. In accordance with the state public safety dollars, you guys authorized us hiring over thirteen. We have not, I decided not to fill those positions immediately. So right now, our authorized strength is one hundred and twenty-nine. We have one hundred and thirty-three police officers on the books, but that does not include five people who are in pathways who will start in June and one cadet, which is another six. Once those six are on, we will be ten overstaffed. We are the only large agency in the state that is overstaffed or that is even at staffing. So I just want to thank you all for that because one of the big recruiting hurdles, obviously being in Hennepin County and a lot of people being afraid of the current county administrator or county attorney, and I'm not going to sugarcoat that. But for you all and being a functional city council, that really helps us in our recruiting efforts here in the city of Bloomington. So I just want to thank you for that because when these applicants are looking for places to work, they look to this position, and then they look for y'all. And it really is really helpful for us to continue to get the best people to work in our police department. And just to give you again, and I say this every meeting also, our department, if you compare us to Rochester and Duluth, like I said, where even when we had these few people, we'll be at one hundred and thirty-nine, whereas Rochester and Duluth are around one hundred and fifty, five, one hundred and sixty cops. So that just kind of gives you where we're at retrospectively to them. Next slide, please. So this is our civilian positions. Currently, right now, we only have two openings in our telecommunications center, which is great. The only reason we haven't filled those is a training capacity issue because we have people in training right now, and our training is full, so we can't train any more people. So we're going to stagger these next two hires out to get people in, and we've been very successful in that. And again, in those positions too, having a functioning council and whatnot also help us recruit the best people. So next slide, please. All right. So let's get into some numbers. If you notice at the top of this sheet, I put violent crimes without transit. This year in March, we took on assisting met-transit police department with the train. Our officers were on the blue line from four o'clock in the morning until around midnight, most days starting in March. So we took those numbers out, and I'm going to give you a heads up that there are three things that impacted our crime numbers this year, and transit was one. So I'm going to break that down for you. So if you look at our murders this year, we're down from last year, but there's two instances, but there were three victims. So we had the murder-suicide on France and Minnesota Street where there were two people, and then we had the incident where the individual killed one of his elderly relatives and aggravated assaulted another. Our robberies are down. Our aggravated assaults are down. We saw a slight increase in our rape numbers, but we had some victims come forward and say that they felt comfortable calling the police, and that's why they called us. But just put this in retrospect, in 2021, we had a hundred and three rapes in the city of Bloomington. So we're down to fifty-six, which again, I don't want to see any of those, but that's better than a hundred and three. Next slide, please. All right. So I'm going to go through this one for you here. If you go down to auto parts, which is our catalytic converter thefts, we had four hundred and sixteen of those in 2022, and last year we're down to a hundred and seventy-four. So that's a significant drop there. Our theft from buildings also went down. Our theft from vehicles, where people were stealing from people's vehicles, also went down. I will turn your attention to larceny shoplifting. We had, and this will impact our overall numbers, an additional five hundred and nine cases this year. That was a result of two things. One, a policy change was made to where we were not going to send police officers to businesses that indicated that they did not want somebody prosecuted for shoplifting. Why is that? It's, we're not sending cops to deal with people for a civil issue. So before this policy change was made, a lot of businesses would call and say someone stole something, we just want our items back and them trespassed. Well, that's a civil issue. So we made that policy change. Two, some of our retailers beefed up their loss prevention efforts, so that has also led to the increase. So understand that five hundred and nine increase is going to have an impact on our overall numbers. Next slide, please. Okay. Here, if you look, our simple assaults were up slightly, and a lot of this is going to be attributed to our increase in shoplifting because a lot of times when people shoplift, they assault the loss prevention officers, and that's also led to this increase. Vandalism was down. Our weapons offenses were flat. All other offenses such as smoking, dog bites, we didn't have as many dog bites last year as we had the year before. So that was down. The trespass, again, we were up a hundred and eighty-nine. And again, that's largely involved because of the shoplifting aspect that took place because you steal, you get trespassed. So that's a lot of what that was about. Next slide, please. Okay, standalone transit. This is what us assisting transit with how it impacted our crime in Bloomington, and I want our citizens to pay attention to this. These numbers are probably undercut because our office started to get calls regarding the train back in January, and we proactively went out there without being involved in transit. But our involvement in transit added three hundred and eighty-two calls, crimes, to our city numbers this year, just from transit. And you can see that laid out here. We are not currently in agreement with transit to provide those overtime services, so we have not been on the train as of December. been on the train as of December thirty-first, but, um, understand that the way transit works in a lot of these cities is, uh, if our cops are doing this numbers, transit is not counting these numbers and their overall numbers. So they're going to the city. So I just want our citizens to understand when you see a slight increase in our crime, it's not that the city is having more crime, it's from these other proactive activities. Uh, next slide, please. So if you look at, uh, our combined crime and I'll just turn you down to the, my left where it says, uh, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and it's got the, um, eight thousand numbers on there. If you were to take, um, our increase in shoplifting, five, oh, five hundred and nine of those and our trespassing increase of a hundred and eighty-nine, which is six hundred and ninety-eight, if you were to minus that from the numbers of without transit, you can see, uh, we'd be at like eight thousand two hundred and twenty-seven. So our crime actually would be considerably lower than last year if it were not for this change in shoplifting and our, um, involvement with transit. Next slide, please. Uh, South Loop, uh, Mall of America. These are calls that we get at the Mall of America. And as you can see, we had a significant increase in call volume at the Mall of America and South Loop, uh, for twenty twenty-three versus twenty twenty-two. Uh, next slide, please. And this is when you take out our directed patrols, our traffic details and traffic stops. Even when you take those numbers out, you can see that we still had a significant increase in our calls at the Mall of America. Next slide, please. We're almost done. Our response to, uh, brain health or mental health calls has increased last year. And obviously we've started to provide, uh, media therapy to folks. So our therapists are currently seeing between ten and fifteen is what their current, uh, caseload is. So I think, you know, for some of these people that are getting seen, we're gonna have an impact, but the vast majority of people still don't want services. So we are tracking that too because I don't want people to be confused when agencies offer these services that everyone's gonna want to get them. The vast majority of people don't want them. But, uh, we did see an increase in, in calls last year in that area. Next slide, please. So our twenty twenty-four community service unit, um, these are all the activities, uh, that we're gonna be doing, uh, this year. And we actually did these last year too, but as you can see, there's a lot of activities. Uh, next slide. So this year we're adding community classes. Uh, the police department, all of our officers go through unconscious bias training, but we're gonna offer that to the community. Obviously it's not just something for us as cops, it's something that our community members should be participating in also. Uh, we're gonna do crime scene investigation classes for high school students this summer. So if you got high school students, you're looking for something to do, there you go. And then, uh, we're gonna do self-defense classes for, uh, some of our seniors and women. So we'll be getting those announcements out to folks. Uh, there and then we're gonna do a drone operation class for high school students. So if we're doing the drone operation class, we'll make an announcement so people don't call and say all these drones are flying around. But, uh, really at the end of the day is to connect with kids and make sure that, um, you know, people's kids are out here doing positive things during the summer. Uh, next slide. All right. Now I'll close with this and I'll take any questions. Um, I've had the privilege of being in this role for almost two years. And the police officers that work here are simply the best in the country. Um, and I'm not just saying that because I'm the chief. They, I watch them day in and day out and the work they do, um, it's, it's second to none. Uh, you have a great police department. And we have a great community, right? I mean, you don't have a great police department without having a great community because that's where it all starts. So with that, uh, I'll take any questions you may have.
Well, thank you, Chief Hodges. Uh, interesting information. Appreciate the context because there is a, a lot of context around the information provided, the numbers going in certain directions, one way or another. And so it's good to hear that and understand the context rather than just re- reacting to data, raw data. So, uh, appreciate you putting some, some, uh, some walls around it and, and help us understand it a little bit more. I greatly appreciate that. So. Council, questions, I see. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so thank you to you for your leadership and to all of the police officers and civilians and, I agree with you. I mean, I obviously, I think we're probably a little biased in Bloomington, but, it's quite obvious that our police department is excellent and that our community appreciates the police department, um, as do we. Uh, so I have two quick questions. So the catalytic converter numbers were down quite significantly. Is that a trend across the metro or is that, could, could we attribute that to the policy that we passed?
I think, um, it's attributed to both. It's kind of down around the metro, but ours, once you guys passed that policy, our numbers started to go down in twenty twenty-two also. So I mean, I really, and I said it at the time, I was really appreciative of the policy that you passed because it did have an impact. And I think it influenced, um, some of our legislatures to pass something on a statewide basis.
Awesome. Good to hear that. Um, and so my second question, uh, you talked about the increase of the MOA. And, you know, can you talk about what you would, I mean, what do you think is behind that? Is it related to the change in our shoplifting policy or the police policy or is it something else?
I think it's, um, a change in our shoplifting policy, but also, um, I'll give the example, two weeks ago, I took my family downtown Minneapolis on a Saturday. It was a complete ghost town. We drove, uh, when I was driving home, the mall was packed and people were parked on the top level at the mall. Uh, they, their traffic out there right now is beyond pre-pandemic numbers. So when you have that many people coming through there, I think that's gonna be the, the generation of calls. But I'm gonna go back to, um, transit, right? And I don't want to sound like a broken record, but some of this is a result of people getting off the light rail and going into the mall and we're having to deal with that.
Okay. Thank you. I would, I guess I'll just maybe state the obvious, but if you guys have ideas for, you know, things that we could do in partnership with the mall and transit, um, to help with those things, I think it would be, uh, good to hear that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Councilmember Alessandra?
Good to have you here, Chief. Um, I have two, I have a follow-up question from, um, Councilmember Carter's and then I have additional question. Related to that question about transit, um, you mentioned that we, um, we don't currently have a, a, um, an agreement with them, uh, right now to provide overtime services. Um, was, was that, uh, was that done? Uh, I guess, I don't want to say on purpose, but was there, was there an expectation that transit would take over those responsibilities and that way we didn't have to do that? And if that's true, are we seeing them do that or is there still a gap in the responsiveness of transit, uh, on the, on the, the rail?
We presented transit with an option to help them, um, because of their, um, staffing numbers. They chose not to, um, they chose not to use that option that we provided them. So right now we're not on the train. Uh, they have hired private security, uh, to be on the train and they, they have few staff out there on the train.
Okay.
Right now.
Do they communicate with you regularly about how that's going or has it kind of been, for lack of a better way to put it, is there, is there something stonewalling, you know, the information exchange there outside of just, you know, they're trying to do it themselves?
Define communicate regularly.
Well, uh, you know, I would assume that these are our numbers. To your point, we have these numbers as a result of our work on transit. Would you be able to easily get how they're doing right now from them?
Oh yeah, we, we could.
Okay, okay. So it's, it's not, uh, it's not opaque.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Um, all right. So my second question was simply, um, if you, uh, I'm gonna put you, I apologize if it sounds like I'm putting you on the spot. I don't mean to. I'm curious if you feel like of any of these trends up and down, what you expect might be continuing in twenty twenty-four?
I think you're gonna see, um, the shoplifting is gonna increase because our retailers, um, quite frankly have grown tired of people stealing from them. So now you're gonna see more people investing in loss prevention, which again is gonna boost up these numbers. And again, that policy change that was made, I think we made that mid-year not to go out here because we've, we had three officers significantly hurt last year dealing with, uh, shoplifters. Um, so, um, I, I do think you're gonna see the continued increase in shoplifting that's gonna continue to occur just because of the proactive policing. Oh, the other numbers, I mean, I, I think we're gonna continue hopefully to see downward trends in most, most of our numbers here in Bloomington. I don't foresee, you know, our auto thefts, everybody's auto thefts do this, right? And I think you might, that's, but I still expect that to remain steady. So.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember. And, and just to double back, the, the, your comments about the Metro Transit situation, um, I mean, from my perspective, incredibly disappointing that we're, we're not able to continue to work with Metro Transit. And I've heard this from, executives at the Mall of America, executives from our, our hotels in the South Loop area, business owners all over there, all over, uh, that area, how much it increased, uh, how much better it was when Bloomington police were on the train? From Mall of America to the Twenty-Fourth Street Station or?
Yeah, we went all the way to the, um, we'd ride past the airport.
Past the airport. The, in, the improvement, uh, was, uh, according to these folks who had, were right there or right there, the, the improvement was phenomenal. And, uh, that's a credit to our officers and the work that they were doing and their presence on the trains. And, I mean, it, it's beyond disappointing that Metro Transit, uh, declined the offer for assistance from, from Bloomington police because whatever it is on the rest of the, uh, on the line, as people come from the airport to Mall of America, they're in Bloomington and it's a reflection of Bloomington. How they're, their, their transit experience is a reflection of Bloomington. And, uh, I just don't believe that the current private security forces, the, uh, uh, the yellow shirts trying to help people out and, and all of that is not the same as police officers on the train. So I'm, uh, it's disappointing and I have expressed that to the, to, uh, to our friends at Met Council and to, um, to others that it's just not, not acceptable and we're very concerned about it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Muat?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thanks for being here, Chief. Um, just wanted to reiterate how thankful we are for the force that we have here, your leadership and how, um, ingrained we are in the community. And that's more of my, my, it's more of a comment. I think the first time you and I met, my, my question too is how do we become more ingrained and entrenched in the community and show the community that we're not just police officers trying to catch you doing bad things, but we are part of the community. We have officers that live here, people who recreate here and do, they do their businesses here. So I'm very excited to see the continued growth of our, uh, public, uh, programming to just bring the residents and businesses in Bloomington together to understand how we can work together as a community with our police officers to create a dynamic community. And so I, I want to thank you for your, that leadership to continue to grow that and look forward to seeing more to come.
Thanks.
Councilmember Nelson and Councilmember Lohman. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, first, thank you, Chief Hodges, and especially to, for your recognition of the tragic events in Burnsville. Having grown up in Burnsville, having my small business in Burnsville for almost forty years, my family business. Our location is directly across the street from Fire, Fire Station Number One and really appreciate your comments and the support of you and the entire city to Burnsville. And I know that they've been thankful for that as well. It's been, it's been tough down there. So thank you for that. Couple of things, um, on transit, is there anything that prevents us from funding and authorizing you to have officers on transit within Bloomington? Is there a restriction, uh, against us doing that? Because I've heard the same comments that, that the mayor has heard about the very positive impact. And if, if there's something we can do to support you and our officers in that, let us know, I guess.
That's a good question. I don't think there's anything that prohibits it, but I think, um, relationships would, I think that might strain.
I would certainly hate to strain your relationship, but if they don't like me, that's fine.
I mean, train, I mean, you know, they, they have a plan, Councilmember, and that's what they're going with.
Okay. I, I just know people that have been on transit, feeling comfortable with it. They're not going back to it. And it is a huge problem for this community that they are not taking that seriously. And, um, I'll say it as vocally as I can, they're going the wrong direction. We're here to help them and they should allow us to help. Uh, second thing, um, you had mentioned in a similar vein, I don't mean to put you on the spot again, but, uh, with the Hennepin County, you had mentioned the shoplifting and the policy that you don't want to go out there and get involved in civil things. I'm sure it's frustrating, um, to go out and do great work at policing and arrest people and just to see them released, um, by the county. Is there any changes there? And do you have any sense of what, um, uh, I think you've talked about this and I apologize if I get the terms wrong, but the clear rate on arrests and how those prosecutions go. I know we do some of the more minor things in-house and, and appreciate our prosecutors and taking crime seriously and working on those. But what are, what are we seeing at the county level in terms of when we do the great police work to bring that there? What is happening in, in terms of data, I guess?
So on our police website, we do publish, um, the county attorney's case declination numbers that, uh, the county attorney gives for our cases. Um, and I will say, you know, we're working through some stuff with the county attorney on specific to Bloomin and Bloomington in our cases. I mean, we meet with her staff regularly. Um, so we're, we're working through some issues and I think, um, some of the stuff we can get through, uh, but there's obviously a different, um, philosophy down there now than there used to be. So I'm, um, cautiously optimistic that we're gonna continue to work through some of these issues with her.
Okay. Again, if you need any support from the council, if we need to be the bad guys, let us know. So, um, I, otherwise I just, uh, thank you for your leadership. Thank you to all the officers who serve Bloomington and all the firefighters and get home safely every night.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you, Mayor. And, you know, you put it well and, um, I don't want to go ahead and repeat all of that stuff, but I do want to thank you and, uh, firefighters and, and yourself, uh, and, uh, and, uh, and officers, uh, for their work, uh, in the community. When I was looking at your presentation, uh, I saw, you know, a bit of a uptick, uh, in the, um, uh, the, the drug violations. And I was just curious, um, there was a couple of categories with that. I was just curious what's, what's driving that, uh, those, those increases there we saw from twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. And then I know that, you know, there was a change with all the reporting. So if you could put that in the context of, of a greater time period, uh, that would be also be helpful as well.
Yeah. So the, some of, and this is what I mean by I think some of our, um, our transit numbers are undercounted because we created a separate category for transit calls later in the year. So I think that uptick was still transit related when our officers were working the train prior to getting the CLT agreement and the, uh, transit platform down there because we had a lot of, uh, overdoses that were taking place in the bathrooms down there. So we went down there to do enforcement. So I'm assuming that that's what the uptick is. Um, so some proactive policing there.
So obviously now we don't have that, that contract going forward. How do we, how will you handle, you know, any calls that are, that are going on over there in terms of reporting? Uh, is there a way for this council to, to, to know? Kind of, because I'd imagine there's gonna be an uptick over there to some degree, you know, given, given what we know.
So yeah, we, we still created our, our transit code where we respond to those instances. So we can still track when we're dealing with, uh, transit specific issues. But I think for the public to understand is transit was given an ease way by the mall as part of the agreement to build the transit center. So that whole place where the light rail comes in at, the mall gave transit an easement because the mall is private property. So that, um, it sometimes gets tricky, uh, when you're talking about numbers when you're responding to that area. So.
Well, glad I'm not, not, uh, ticking that along. Um, so I did notice, um, that, uh, you know, you, you had put those different classes in there and, um, I, I am interested to see, you know, how, how many folks are participating in that. And then, you know, you know, giving the policing is so, so difficult and I see that we're, we're, we're getting out in the community. Is there anything else that we as, as, you know, just residents can do to help the, the Bloomington police force, uh, uh, to be more successful?
Well, I think, you know, continue what you're doing. I mean, I meant what I said when, you know, having a functional council really helps this city. I, I, you know, I know a lot of people, um, you know, sometimes you might get hate mail and all that stuff, but, it, it really helps. I mean, because really, you know, at the end of the day, there's a, a division in some respects between police officers and elected officials and I'm not gonna sugarcoat it. Some of it's deserved, right? I mean, you know, a lot of enforcement, especially in this area, some politicians have said some very egregious things about police officers. And we don't forget. We got long memories. I don't forget. Um, so, uh, but just being that functional piece, it helps. It really helps us and it helps our community. So I know some people might not agree with everything you all do, but be assured. So I know some people might not agree with everything you all do, but be assured, Bloomington, you have a functional council here.
And then finally, you had mentioned at the outset of your presentation, the rank of how many folks that you have in comparison to other jurisdictions of our size. You know, and I know that you had also mentioned at another point in time, we talked about the budget, that we were, you know, have a number of retirements that are coming up. And so I'll ask again, as I always ask every time I see you, you know, do you feel like we are where we need to be at from a, making sure we have enough officers there to be able to be successful for preventing crime in the city of Bloomington?
Yeah, I do. I mean, we're, we're where we need to be right now. And I mean, the numbers really, like I said, I don't have a problem with the uptick in shoplifting because that just shows me that now the policy change and retailers getting tired of, you know, getting stuff stolen from them. So I don't see anything in these numbers that concern me. The vast majority of the upticks that we have here are proactive policing, which, which is good. And our officers are coming home safe every night. So I think that's good too. And our, we have less victims in our city and that's good.
Oh, if I could just finally say, Mayor, I just appreciate that you, you know, it was very clear about why their, the numbers are different because of a reporting issue where we were taking on more, there was an increase in that piece and not from what we're, we're not lacking or not doing here as a city.
Like I said, you know, I'm going to repeat myself. If we took out the trespassing increase, the shoplifting and transit, we are far below than we were even last year.
Councilmember Rivas.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I just want to thank you from my heart and all the officers and the first responders for your service. Thank you so much. I don't want to get into too much. I was asking questions. I already heard enough. But thank you so much for your service. It's truly appreciated.
Thank you. One final question, Chief. Star Tribune this morning reported on the Hennebun County, a three-day Safer Communities Summit in mid-May, bringing together law enforcement, local leaders, school districts, community leaders and so on. I haven't checked my mailbox lately, but I haven't got an invitation yet. I hope you're at least aware of and helping out with this.
Uh, that'd be a no.
Good to know.
Yeah. And you know, and I'll finish with this. I mean, I really, I think, you know, for our community, we are a great community here in Bloomington, right? And it just shows that great communities put great people in office, great people in office make decisions that really support the public safety as a community as a whole. And it's working here in Bloomington. And that's something, I think a lot of people don't realize, we're the second largest city in Hennebun County, the fourth largest city in the state. We have more retail and more hotels than any other place in the state with our freeways and everything. If you ever wanted to be a criminal, this would be the place to do it. But because of our functioning community, we do a pretty good job of keeping our neighborhoods safe.
I would echo that. Thank you. Thank you for your work. I hope you'll extend that thanks from the entire city council, team that are rank and file. And to civilian force, we greatly appreciate the work that you do. You mentioned earlier, it takes a, you know, it takes a great community to have a great police department. Takes a great police department to have a great community as well. So thank you. Thanks for being with us tonight.
Thanks.
Counsel, excuse me, we will move on to our consent business. Item three on our agenda. Councilmember Mua has the consent agenda tonight. Councilmember Mua.
Thank you, Mayor. I have three items to hold so far. Any other holds tonight? All right. We have item 3.1, 3.2, and 3.3 to hold. So I will move item 3.4 through 3.12.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Mua, second by Councilmember Loman to accept tonight's consent business as stated. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Councilmember Mua, let's start with item 3.2 if we could.
3.2 is Councilmember Loman.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. This is for an approval of council travel for NLC Conference. And I want to hold this for two reasons. One, you know, our mission is to cultivate an enduring and remarkable community where people want to be. The community thrives when its members share responsibility for its well-being. Transformation will come through collective courage and the willingness to take risk. And a big part of that is training. And having our members be trained is incredibly an important thing. Councilmember Delisandro pointed out to me that at some point in time, that I had managed this council to do better around, you know, attending these events or that type of thing. I don't know what I said wrong. And if I offended you, I wanted to do it right now, immediately, even before I look at any videos and I apologize to you if I've offended you in any way with regard to any travel that you would have taken or anything you would have done. I want to just make, go on the record right now that if there was anything that I had said that would have, you know, made you feel horrible, I don't want that to be the case. We're all in the same mission here together. And I want to let you know that I value your opinion and the work that you do on behalf of the city of Bloomington. And again, I apologize if there's anything I said that's offended you in any way. And with that, I'm happy to move this.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Mua to accept item 3.2 on tonight's consent business. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Item 3.3.
Councilmember Delisandro.
Councilmember Delisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Mua. So I know what this is and there's a part of me that just wants to stop voting yes for these things because I really, really want us to go on a road diet. And so I, there's a part of me that's just doing that. And it's performative and I don't want to do it for that reason. But in this particular case, we did have a really good conversation about the folks at the corner of where the Lifetime Fitness is on Lyndale Avenue at like, it's not Lyndale Avenue. It's like the Bloomington Freeway area, 106th and like that strip. And I didn't hear resolution about it before this came before council. So I'm hoping that we, either we know that we're going to take, like we're going to do what we need to do there with them, or are they just going to get that double assessment that we talked about? We really wouldn't like them to have happen. And just because we didn't talk about it, I thought maybe it would be addressed, but I'm just curious.
And I'm going through the files in my mind, Councilmember, to remember this discussion and where we ended up on it. Mr. Keel, can you help, help remind me here?
Yes, I think what Councilmember Delisandro is referring to is a conversation that was had during the public hearing for this project. And there was a number of properties that had frontage on two streets, one of them on the Frontage Road. I forget the actual name of it, but on the Frontage Road. And it was, there was some discussion about the fairness of our assessment policy and if that was the proper way to assess it. And I think what we said we would do is we would certainly report back about the options of that. And as I recall, that was before we have an assessment hearing, which is really kind of the issue of that. And which will happen late in the summer, early in the fall of this year is when that actual assessment hearing would be held. So this item is just approving the plans and specifications and we would go out for bids. Typically what we do after we award a contract and we construct it, then we tally all the costs associated with the project. And then the assessments are done after that. So I don't think, we have not forgotten that issue. But this was really not the spot to address it.
Good. Thank you for the reminder, Mr. Keel. I appreciate that.
Yeah, that's very helpful. I appreciate the option. So the, so my understanding for those residents will be that there'll be a moment when we will have calculated the assessment, given our current policy. And then there'll be an opportunity for us to talk with them or for you to talk with them about, in that assessment hearing, about what the options might be alternatively. And then you might even bring that back to council to say, hey, you know, we'd like to see you make a change or whatever. Is that generally speaking how it'll work?
That is correct.
Okay, great. And that's in the May-June timeframe?
Probably August timeframe.
Okay, great. That's very helpful. Thank you. With that, I'll move 3.3.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Delisandro, second by Councilmember Mua to accept item 3.3 in tonight's consent business. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Councilmember, thanks for bringing that up. That, I was digging through the files, trying to figure that out in my head, but I appreciate you remembering that. I really do. Let's double back to item 3.1 if we could. Councilmember Mua, the resolution to accept donations.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Wanted to take this opportunity to just thank the incredible residents and business owners within Bloomington for their donations. I know the residents here are very generous when it comes to supporting our community and the work that we do here at the city. And so I wanted to thank the Mall of America for donating to CoEd's Baby Resource Fair. I know that's going to be a really big fair that we have this year to really provide young families with the resources that they need. I'm so excited to have that going on. We have an anonymous donation for the Bloomington Ice Garden with all the work that we have going on. I know how, and as a new hockey dad myself, I've personally seen how dedicated and excited folks are to see Bloomington Ice Gardens get a new facelift and a much needed infrastructure improvement. And so that donation is going to go a long way and really provide the next generation of hockey players in Bloomington, the opportunity to thrive here in Bloomington. So thank you so much for that. And then we've got a number of residents who've reached out and donated to our police department, whether it's through the animal shelter for treats and dog food, or just directly to our police officers providing, you know, snacks and especially the Richfield Bus Company for providing charter buses for the Public Safety Memorial Service. And so I think that just speaks volumes to the wonderful residents that we have here and the businesses we have here. And so with that, I'd be happy to move resolution to accept 3.1.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Mua, second by Councilmember Loman to accept the donations as listed in item 3.1. And thank you for your eloquent explanation of that, Councilmember Mua. Appreciate it. Any further council discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thanks, Councilmember Mua, for taking on the consent business for us this evening. Moving on, as I mentioned, as we adopted the agenda tonight, we have nothing under hearings, resolutions, and ordinances. So we'll move on to item five, our organizational business. And our first item under organizational business is an information item. A draft term sheet review for our 700 American Boulevard project. And Michael Polarmo from our port authority is here. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. I'm here today to talk about 700 American. It's been a little bit of a jog so far, but we're going to start sprinting here. So we want to bring the draft terms to make sure that, get your feedback and make sure there's nothing that's going to trip us right at the finish line. So with that, I'll kind of jump into some background. And knowing we have a new council member, some of this will be kind of repeat for you, but to bring you up to speed on where we are with the project. So 700 American is a city-owned property at Lyndale and American Boulevard. It's about 1.85 acres by the REI and Top Line. Excellent. So in November 2022, we had closed an RFP to sell the property. In that RFP, we indicated we'd like to see a high-density mixed-use development that really highlights the corner and shows a gateway to the Lyndale Avenue corridor. With our recommendations, city council directed staff to work with Schaefer Richardson to be the developer for that. And we worked real quickly after that to provide a letter of support, locking in our qualified census tract status for our low-income housing tax credit application, which became an important piece. It was going to lapse in 2023, so we needed to lock that in. And so next slide. So with that complete, we then entered the entitlement process, working through that. In 2023, we've worked the project a little bit, worked on parking issues, went through the zoning, met, did a neighborhood meeting. And as we were doing that, we were awarded $1.77 million from the Met Council Livable Communities Demonstration Account. So that will help fund the project and fill a little gap that we will talk about today. And December 18th is when council reviewed that for entitlements. The project, at that time, as you remember, we were directed to look at what we can do to incorporate some labor protection language in the development agreement. Next slide. So the project that you approved back in December was a 128-unit building, about 1,500 square feet of commercial. There are eight units at 30% area median income. Those will be supported through project-based vouchers from our HRA. 104 units will be at 50% area median income and the remaining 16 units are at 60% area median income. So it averages for the most part to be at 50% area median income. And to give you a little context, this is senior housing. For a family of two, that income is just under $50,000 annually. So we originally were saying, trying to manage expectations, saying this may be a long process. Sometimes it takes a couple of rounds of going for low-income housing tax credits, your LI-Tech. You usually don't win on your first application, so it might take a year or so to get through that process. Well, we got it in the first round. So January 2024, we were awarded the tax credits. So now we are entering our sprint here at the end. So I'll kind of review some of our draft terms. So as I mentioned, we really look at what that gap is in our project. So the developer will have their primary mortgage, they'll have their syndicated mortgage from the tax credits. And those are a large part of what's funding the project. But then they have the Met Council grant and will be applying for a grant through the Hennebun County Affordable Housing Incentive Fund. But we won't hear back until about April on whether we get that. So we're looking to fill that gap and we're looking to do that with tax increment financing, which we are projecting that's about $500,000, a little over of present value. So if we understand that we'll be getting increment each year, we can use that to kind of go back on what that amount we can kind of take out in a loan today. And that's about $500,000. That increment will be used to help pay down the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So this is kind of an up-to amount, but about $3.4 million of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. It won't obviously pay that whole thing. It's just a portion of it. So part of it will be paid through excess cash flow. We're looking at a term about 4.5% over 18 years, 18 years, and which matches their, their private mortgage. So it needs to match their private mortgage. With that, if there's a sale that happens in that period, which they are anticipating a sale or refinancing throughout year 15, that is when we'll be expected to be paid back in full. But until that time, we'll be getting the TIF and we'll be getting excess cash flow from the project to help pay down that balance. And then we are also looking at a land write-down. So we had put in that RFP that we were anticipating to sell the property at $2 million, similar to other properties appraised in the area. But because of the opportunity housing ordinance, they are able to apply to have park dedication fees reimbursed and other permit fees. So rather than reimbursing them for that, we've thought it's simpler to reduce in a land write-down rather than have us pay us money just to pay them back for that. This is an optional incentive that council has the ability to decide whether or not to give that. But we had been running kind of with the assumption that they would be receiving that from the beginning and have been kind of understanding where that funding is going to come from, through our various sources that we have. So we have sources through pooled TIF and other funding accounts that we will be covering these, this gap for. So we settled on the 1.1 million, partly because of what the fees are, but we knew we couldn't go below a certain limit because as it mentioned in the staff report, we would like to pay some of that excess from the Right-Away Fund into the Right-Away Fund for Lyndale Avenue. So this was originally purchased through state aid funding to help with the widening of American Boulevard. And there's still a balance that needs to be paid down on that. But that is only about $600,000. So the remaining amount, that about $500,000, we will use to pay down the balance on a similar situation along Lyndale Avenue to help with the development of that project as well as that moves forward. Again, for cognizant of what the different funding sources are to kind of help facilitate development on that site as well as this site. And then one last, just to give you a quick update, we are working with our legal team. We don't have specifics quite yet on what the language is for labor practices, how we're going to incorporate that. We are looking at, maybe there is potential for the contractors to provide documentation that we would be able to review. That's still something that's being worked out with our legal, both our legal teams. So that will come back. Hopefully, well, it'll come before the development agreement. And so we are now entering this phase in March and April, where we'll kind of have to go and do all the approvals for this term sheet. So the TIF approval process, Housing Trust Fund. So the TIF approval process, Housing Trust Fund, as we talked about, and then the land sale. So it is a city-owned property. Our goal is to close on the property and sell the property by May or early June. That's kind of what we need for the tax credits to work out. But with that, we'll be able to start construction in July. It's about 18-month process to construct the building. So it'd be open hopefully by the end of 2025. So this is just a review of kind of when we anticipate meetings to occur. We'll bring a similar, probably the same presentation to the HRA next week to get their head nod approval. Then Planning Commission has to approve TIF to show that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. And then we'll go and have public hearings for the approval of the TIF, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and the sale of the land. And then with that, I'll open up for any questions that you might have. We also have Schaefer Richardson here to answer any questions I might not be able to.
Thank you, Mr. Palermo. Council questions? Councilmember Lohman.
Maybe I missed it, but I thought that tonight we're gonna have some discussion about some of the labor terms? Is that not tonight, or?
No, we don't have, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lohman, we don't have the specifics quite on that yet.
Okay, I must have missed that. Okay, I thought we were gonna hear something on that.
City Attorney says the 18th.
The 18th, okay. I'm sorry, I got the date wrong on that. So then, I have a couple of other questions then. So then with the, you had mentioned the write-down piece of it. And I'm just, you know, I mean, I kind of already know academically, but I still want to ask the question, because if you're the public, I just, you know, want to have a better understanding of that. I know there would be an impact if we didn't do that write-down to the project. So if we didn't do that and we did a different alternative, help me understand kind of what that means and how that works. I know it's a lot of, you know, a lot of accounting mess, and that's why it's easier just to do what we have there. But is there any advantage to what we're doing now as opposed to the opposite thing, other than the, you know, the work with it?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lohman, essentially, if we don't do the land write-down, we're creating a $900,000 gap in their pro forma that needs to be filled somehow. So with the write-down, like I said, it's a little bit easier. Just, it's easier for us just to reduce the price rather than to pay us full price, to just give them the money back. You know, we're just adding transactions there that don't need to occur. We know that amount that we're gonna reduce it by. It doesn't make sense to charge you money for me to give you back money. So we'll just go ahead and kind of lower it on the front end.
And then, just one last question then on this piece here. So then, so when we decided to kind of do that, you'd mentioned that we can't go lower than that, and that's the piece I'm not understanding. Why not lower than the 900?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lohman, if we go lower, it would put at jeopardy other projects that we want. You know, $900,000 is what we feel that we have money available to account for this. If we go lower than that, then we're dipping into other funds and pooling from other potential projects. So we are comfortable with that amount, but going more than that, then it's gonna start impacting other projects.
That wouldn't get us any more affordability if we went any lower at all?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lohman, I mean, it could potentially, but yeah, I think that's the difficult analysis. If we're killing another project to get one more or a 50% unit to going down to a 30% unit, I think at some point, you're starting to kill, you're starting to really impact the built environment and not having as much impact on the affordable units. I mean, we would all like to see more affordable units, but I think you're gonna be stopping other affordable units from happening.
The only reason why I ask the question is that at certain levels, we have a need for more of those as opposed to at other levels. And that's the only reason why I'm asking the question. I know that would certainly kill other projects, but, you know, we are kind of ahead in some areas, and that's why I want to ask that question. That we evaluated and looked at that, because I know there is a need at lower levels, so.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions here. Am I understanding correctly that the permit fees and park dedication fees are approximately $900,000?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, there is, again, a little bit more of a write-down to help with fill that project gap. It is not quite $900,000, but it is in the $100,000s.
Okay. Maybe something to look at someday. What happens if the cash flow isn't adequate on the project? What happens with the Housing Trust Fund money?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, that is something that we are discussing with the developer. We are talking about a corporate guarantee that would hopefully at least have some minimum cash flow that the, if the project isn't funding, that the corporation, the parent company, would be able to pay. We understand it's probably not gonna pay down upfront. It really is that capital event that's gonna happen in year 15, 16, 17, where they either refinance or sell the property, in which case we're gonna get the vast majority, and that's where that corporate guarantee is important. But we're both anticipating that that sale would more than adequately pay back the fund at that point.
Okay. And then in terms of the development fees, according to ordinance, the development fee reimbursement would come from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund? And that's in our ordinance, that that is the source of the money? So how are we using land write-down to not, to pay for that reimbursement when that is different than what's in our ordinance?
So in this case, they're not actually getting the reimbursement. We're choosing not to, and we're giving them the land write-down, so I'm sorry.
Okay, so.
Think through that for a moment.
So I guess then the question in my mind becomes, instead of doing that, would we be better off doing less land write-down and using the Housing Trust Fund for the reimbursement portion of that in order to give more flexibility to what we can do with that money for future uses? I know there's a couple of accounting transactions that go on, but it seems like it would give us more flexibility to get a higher purchase price for the land and then do as we intended, use the Housing Trust Fund to reimburse those fees.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, I'm trying to do the math in my head. I think I understand what you're saying. Rather, I think it is, it really is tied to what the funds we're pooling from to pay for that. The trust fund is a loan that we have taken out from old National Bank. They might be using the remaining balance of the trust fund. That 3.4 million is the remaining balance of the trust fund. So if they take that full amount, there isn't additional money to take out of the trust fund to utilize for that. So hopefully that answers.
It does. It also raises, and that's not a question for this, I don't think, but I'm concerned that we've drained the Housing Trust Fund, and now I'm hearing that it might get paid back in this portion in 15 years in a refi as opposed to being sort of a revolving loan account that we had originally discussed with the Housing Trust Fund. So I don't know if that's part of this conversation in terms of approving this or not. And then my last question is, you indicated that it would go to the HRA, but doesn't the port now do the Opportunity Housing Ordinance? So when does it go to the port, or did it already? And maybe I was there.
Dang it, Jenna.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, I understand your confusion. So at this point, the ordinance, so while the port is managing the Opportunity Housing Ordinance, the way that the ordinance is written, it still indicates that the HRA is, the board is the one that's in charge of the ordinance and not the port board. So that is something that could be discussed in the future on whether it's appropriate for other body to take that. So while staff is working on it, the board's authorities still exist under the HRA.
Okay. Ms. Manderscheid.
So mayor members, you may remember that on an annual basis, there's an agreement between the city and the port and the city and the HRA related to staff services. So we all, we all work in the same building, and they're all within community development. And so there are some staff that are working in all of them. And so although something might specifically live in one entity, it doesn't necessarily, there are no walls, so to speak, literally. And so it's more about getting the work done.
Okay. Again, another thing to maybe clean up at some point, if port's in charge of OHOA, should probably be on a port agenda. Agreed. Counsel, anything else? Any additional questions? Councilmember Rivas, please, if, would you please turn your mic on, please? Your microphone.
I think I. Maybe, perhaps I can set up a meeting with you, and it's just curiosity. I mean, I do have a basic understanding of what transactions are since I took some classes. Thanks for providing those classes. But I do have a lot of questions, and at this point, since I didn't write it down, I won't make any sense. So if you will be so kind as to, in the future, have a meeting with me, it would be great.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Rivas, yeah, that would be great. We can meet with you and kind of one-on-one and walk through these and some of the implications.
I think that's entirely appropriate, and it's a great idea. That's good. You mentioned, Mr. Palermo, after kind of slow-walking this, all of a sudden it's running now. And you're really expecting they're gonna be in the ground by the end of the summer here and work beginning on this? I see nods out in the audience, so yes, well, good. I'm excited to hear that. Good. Very good. Anything else, counsel? Well, this is for information only, so thank you for the information, Mr. Palermo. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and we'll see you shortly.
Very good. Our next item is item 5.2. It's an update on the State Community Health Services Advisory Committee. And I think this is a direct result from a comment that I made, I think, actually, because we had talked about this on a few different occasions. And I said, I expressed my ignorance as to what this group does. And I said this would be good to have, for the council and for the community, a presentation on what the SCH SAC is. And so, and here we are. So we've got Dr. Nick Kelly, and we've got Councilmember Carter, who is a member of Bloomington's representative on the State Community Health Services Advisory Committee, to kind of lead us through as to what we're dealing with here. So please, take it on over.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers? Okay. So I'm looking forward to talk a little bit more about what Shack does. And in really the unique nature of Shack, as a way of anecdote, I was recently with 18 other states talking about system transformation for public health. And everyone is jealous of the fact that we have Shack here in Minnesota.
You're in for a wild ride.
So, a little context, walk back down history. Back in 1858, one of the first things that happened in Minnesota was they gave, the legislator gave the ability for towns and cities to regulate things that caused infectious disease. Hence the little infectious icon. That resulted in literally thousands, a little over 2,000 local boards of health. So you can imagine the state ran into a lot of challenges trying to coordinate work around, I think, just under 2,100 entities. And so in the 1970s, they thought it would be helpful to clarify that. And so in 1976, the Local Public Health Act went into place, and we went from 2,000 to 51 community health boards.
If I could ask Dr. Kelly, so there's less than 1,000 cities in Minnesota and only 87 counties. How did we end up with 2,100 local boards of health?
You could literally have a town, any, you could have multiple within a community. The structure behind it was fairly loose. So if you had an interested group, you could have, you know, one side of a community, another side of a community. It was fairly fluid.
Sounds efficient. Okay, thank you.
So in 1976, the Local Public Health Act went into place. And so we went from more than 2,000 to what we have now is 51. 51 community health boards, which are the governing entity for local public health. And so it's really important to think about the community health board structure. So that includes cities like us, it includes counties, it includes multi-county, it includes, in some cases, hospital-run public health programs. There is a wealth, there's about six different structures of what community health boards look like in Minnesota. And you can see there the statute language. This is unique to Minnesota. We are the only state in the nation that has this process, where we have elected officials that represent the community health boards that participate in this process. And so that uniqueness is incredibly valuable. So when you're at these Shack meetings, you are sitting next to a farmer, you're sitting next to a businessperson from somewhere in Minnesota, and you're sitting next to somebody that's doing things here in the Twin Cities metro. That diversity of thought, all coming together to accomplish a common purpose, is incredibly powerful. If you go to the next slide. And as I've said before, it's uniquely Minnesotan. Just like Honeycrisps, Mall of America, Juicy Lucy and the Loons, Shack is something very unique and something that Minnesota is very proud of.
So I'm gonna take a couple of minutes to talk about what Shack is. And so Dr. Kelly already alluded to that. So it is a nonpartisan group of public health administrators from across the state. So people like Dr. Kelly from all of those public health agencies, as well as city council members, and then county commissioners. And I would say probably majority county commissioners from the local elected perspective. And then our primary responsibility is to advise and provide guidance to the Commissioner of Health. So at this point, it's Dr. Brooke Cunningham. So you can go to the next slide. So the broader Shack group meets about four times a year, and they are usually all-day meetings on Fridays, so it's super fun. And then we have multiple work groups, as you can see, that help move the bodies' work forward. So the bolded items on the list are the ones that either Dr. Kelly or myself sit on. So I sit on the executive committee, and then that obviously provides kind of the overarching direction for the group. And then I think you sit on the other three, correct? I don't sit on those.
We have a public health staff that sits on the performance measure work group. And then I sit on the other three.
And then as part of the Shack, we also have a spot on the joint leadership team, which Dr. Kelly mentioned a little bit in his last presentation to the council, is really providing that strategy and framework for modernizing our public health system across the state.
So when you think about some of the impacts that Shack's having, this is really creating a cadre of largely elected officials and public health leaders across the state that are talking about the stories of what public health is doing and why we're modernizing our field. Many of, much of this work is really driven by the Association of Minnesota Counties process. Given that the majority of public health agencies are county-based, they're heavily invested into the AMC process. And so it's been incredible to watch over the last few years, the Shack leadership, elected officials, really pushing and getting public health to be a priority in the AMC legislative platform. That then resulted in some significant improvements in local public health funding. And so that power and structure has been incredible. Shack helped, so when you see that new funding come down, if you read the statute, it will often say, this funding is to do this. In consultation with Shack, the commissioner will distribute. So the state statute actually says Shack has to be consulted. They come up with a work group, they drive that work. It goes back to Shack, Shack approves it, it goes to the commissioner, and then the money goes out the door. We saw that with the FIP oversight group with the recent EP funding. We also saw that with the Foundation of Public Health. So I was part of both of those processes with, under the Shack work group, along with some incredible elected officials from here in the metro and greater Minnesota. And then that joint leadership team is this team, it is jointly shared power. And then that Joint Leadership Team is this team, it is jointly shared power between the Minnesota Department of Health, Shack, and Local Public Health. We have an external facilitator, and we are there providing guidance and direction for how the system moves forward. And so it's senior leadership from Minnesota Department of Health, it's members from the Shack Executive Team, and it's members of the Local Public Health Leadership. And we rotate in and out as our terms change, but that group is driving this modernization in Minnesota, and it's incredible to see some of the changes, even in my short time on that group.
Go to the next slide. So this is a slide that I wanted to add, because I'm always like, "Why am I here? What are we doing?" So not only because we, you know, per legislate, the legislative process, we are supposed to be part of this, but really there are significant benefits to Bloomington, and so obviously, we're biased, but we do believe that Bloomington has one of the best public health departments in the state. And I, I can't tell you how often I actually, we're in meetings together, and I see Dr. Kelly being tapped and like cornered by public health administrators and county-elected officials from across the state asking him questions, and, and it's really cool. It's, it's really great to know that in Bloomington, we are a local public health department that is leading the way in a lot of different areas. The other thing that I wanted to mention was that because a lot of county-elected officials and public health administrators are part of the Shack, we are able to provide a very uniquely local city perspective to the Department of Health. And, and it is different, right? The counties just work on a much more massive system, even in greater Minnesota, and like Dr. Kelly mentioned, some of the public health agencies are multi-county, so it's even bigger. So, so it's really important for the Commissioner of Health and their leadership there to understand kind of some of those unique perspectives and challenges that we can experience at the local level. And then as Dr. Kelly mentioned, some really concrete examples, we are able to influence state policy, actions, and priorities, and, and make sure that some of those resources get down here to the local level. Would you add anything else?
I think one of the, the other things we've seen is, so the Joint Leadership Team's been actually meeting here. They, it's a nice central location, and so we get people showing up from across the state of Minnesota on a regular basis to Bloomington to participate in the Joint Leadership Team and enjoy this incredible facility and be part of that process.
So that's what we have. I think, yep.
Thank you. Thanks for the update and thanks for the information.
Mayor, taking questions at all?
Absolutely. Councilmember Lohman has a question.
Yeah, you know, and I, as I say, Councilmember Carter, I'm really glad you added that benefits to Bloomington, you know, in particular, that second bullet around providing unique local city perspectives. And I'll tell you, just from being on council for a number of years, my, my personal fear has always been that one day, that folks will not understand the import of having that public, having a public health locality. And what I wanted to have you to talk about is just a little bit about, you know, the ability for other cities that want to maybe do what we're doing in the county, to just talk about that uniqueness a little bit more, and how important that is to kind of keep what we've got. If you could expound a little bit more on that. Like, so for example, if I'm Eden Prairie, could I just simply go to the state and, you know, be a part of one of these, you know, have a separate setup?
Mayor, Councilmember Lohman, the, the short answer is no. So the way the statute is written, you had to meet certain qualifications as a city. You had to be an existing commu, local Board of Health, you had to have a certain population level, and you had to agree to continue the service. So there were four cities in Hennepin, and there was one city in Ramsey that met those qualifications back in 76. St. Paul and Ramsey emerged into a single entity, and the remaining four are in Hennepin County. You can't, so if you were a large city in Dakota County, you couldn't say you could be a community health board today based on current statute. There are conversations right now that the Joint Leadership Team's navigating about what some of that looks like, some of those structures. We often will comment that the way we do government in public health today is not the same way we did it back in 1976. There's a lot of things that have changed, and so that's one of the things the Joint Leadership Team is doing, is trying to navigate how we provide some modernized language on some of that process. That's not going to be a quick process, but it is really recognizing that importance. You heard the, the chief earlier talk about some of the complexities of navigating big issues across multiple cities within a county. We navigate some of the same things, where we're often working with our county partner to help them understand how to work with local city councils or do things. It's not uncommon for our staff to get tapped to help with, "How do you engage on a smoke-free ordinance?" Or, "How do you engage with this?" Because that's what we do, and we hear that often, whether it's the partnership with Park and Rec or Public Works. We're here at the city level, where the, the, the policy meets the road, and that's what makes the big health impact.
Just two more quick things, just, you know, with respect, some, there's been an argument out there that, you know, there's, I don't know how to put this, a double taxation in a sense, so you're paying for Hennepin County, they're providing the same service, and then, you know, that what we're, what we're doing here in terms of, can you talk a little bit about that? I know you broadly talked about that, but if you could talk more specifically about what the differences are and what the benefit is for taxpayers here in Bloomington?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lohman, I, I will say, broadly speaking, our service boundaries, where they, they may overlap from a county and a city boundary standpoint, we rarely interact with Hennepin in doing the work. We partner on many things, but what happens in Bloomington and our rich field is almost always driven by our staff and those incredible local connections, and that is something we're really proud of, and those strong relationships. We do work closely with the county on, on several big projects and initiatives, but the work that's occurring here is, is uniquely Bloomington's work, and we see differences in how that looks when you look at how things happen in Eden Prairie or Maple Grove, things like that.
I will also add, Dr. Kelly mentioned this the last time he presented to council, and I've heard it in Shack meetings from public health administrators and county-electors across the state, that our public health system has been under-invested in for decades. And so there is more need and more opportunity to serve our community, and in Bloomington, we're lucky to have more resources because we have local public health, because we have boots on the ground, and people who interact every single day with citizens and know what the issues really are. And so I think about like the mental health crisis, the opioid challenge, back when, well, it's still a challenge, tobacco, but cannabis, I mean, there's so many issues that are so local in nature, and, and of course have, you know, regional and statewide impacts, but again, like, we are very fortunate in Bloomington to have the public health department that we have and the resources that we have, and there's not duplication of resources with the county, but we're actually able to have a greater impact in Bloomington, I would argue, because of the resources that we have. The people across the state are frankly, frankly, like, not, I don't want to say envious, because that's kind of a negative term, but, I mean, people in public health at this point across the state are desperate. They're in really bad shape, so there's plenty of need.
And I just want to thank you for your role, and, you know, Dr. Kelly, especially what you do, and I just hope that we can, you know, think of ways to preserve this for future councils so that they understand the import of this. So I'm glad, Mayor, that you asked this question, that we need to continue, you know, this dialogue for future councils to understand it, because, you know, a lot of us don't come from, you know, out of the medical field or that type of thing, or see the imports, or, you know, might sometimes get confused by, by the fact that, well, the county has this, and the city has this, why are we, why are we doing this? To this is a good way to save money in, in the budget. But I, I, I want to just be sure that we're, we're always steadfast in keeping this as a part of the city and, you know, into the future. So again, thank you, Mayor, for raising this question.
Additional questions, Counsel? I would simply add, I'm glad to hear that the city of Bloomington is hosting meetings of this group in a lot of different ways. It's, it shows the good work that gets done here. I think it's always good to bring people within our doors and show them what we've got going on, and, so keep that up. I like, I like to hear that. Well done. So, well, thank you. No questions, Counsel? Thank you so very much. Appreciate the update. That brings this counsel to item 5.3, our City Council Policy and Issue Update. I will start off by recapping our City Council Listening Session at 5:45 this evening. We had four speakers this evening. Sally Ness expressed some ongoing concerns regarding handicap parking access at Darrell Farouk. We advised her that Chief Hodges has advised it is not an issue, and we continue to repeat that, that Chief Hodges has advised it's not an issue. Jim Fisher spoke to the group, asking specifically about biodiversity in Central Park and along the Nine Mile Creek Corridor, and quizzed the council on a number of different things, and I had no idea that it took a lady slipper eight to 10 years to bloom in Minnesota, so that, that was good work by Mr. Fisher to, to educate us and also continue that conversation regarding biodiversity in Central Park. We heard from Matthew Sindalar, and he and his wife Diana are concerned with the requirement for obtaining financial consulting 30 days before closing as part of the, the city of Bloomington Home Buyer Mortgage Assistance Program. And so we, we'll get back to this in just a moment, because I did agree, or did promise Mr. Sindalar that we would discuss this as a council outside of this report, and we'll come back to that. And then Mr. Andy Thule spoke and advocated on behalf of Trade and Technical and Industrial Education, and opined the need for a local job fair or trade and technical education kind of fair for, for the city of Bloomington, and maybe to do something in conjunction between the city of Bloomington and the city, or, excuse me, the Bloomington School District. Once again, I'll point out, half of our people this evening were first timers to talk to us at our listening session, and we had a good conversation, and continues to be, I think, well-attended and well-used by the residents who are, come by and see us. So I'm going to turn to Ms. Kirby here and see about her updates. We're going to come back to this, this question with the Sindalars. I know you received an email, and if you want to take, take a look at that, and just trying to ponder what we might be able to do on behalf of them. Ms. Kirby?
All right. Mayor and City Council, it was a pleasure to join you tonight. I've got a couple of updates for you, starting with a couple of upcoming staff moves that we've got, and I'll start with our Assistant City Manager, Mike Sable. This is his last Bloomington City Council meeting that he'll be joining us for. However, he's got many more city council meetings ahead of him, because he is moving to Maplewood as their city manager. So he will be leaving us, tomorrow's his last day, so he's leaving us this week. So, Mike, we just want to say thank you for everything you've done for the city for the last several years. You've had a major impact on us, and we really, really appreciate it. Thank you.
I will chime in if, if I could, please interrupt. Thanks, Mike. I've appreciated your counsel, I've appreciated your, your insight and your wisdom into so many of the different things that we worked on, your friendship, and I just enjoyed getting to know you, and wish you the best of luck in Maplewood. I hope you last longer than the nine months that I lasted in the city of Maplewood, I have no doubt you will, but thank you so much. It's a, it's a long story, trust me. But greatly appreciated, and best of luck to you moving forward. Counsel, anybody else? Please.
Well, it's, it's been great to have you here. You know, you went to a great, great college, but one of the things I very much appreciated is that part of how you reshaped the city manager's office with respect to getting back to residents, and that's what we're in the business of doing here at the city. And so I appreciate your ability to kind of get back to residents and really kind of lift up what, you know, our city manager has been, has been doing over, over the time that you've been here. And I know that you've had a lot of work with, with HR and those types of things, with a lot of turnover and that type of thing, so I appreciate that you, you've brought your expertise there, and then also here to the council meeting in terms of handling some interesting times with phone calls, and handling that with professionalism. And so I will certainly miss your smiling and happy face walking down the, down the hallways here, and pulling me aside and giving me a little bit of advice on this or that. Good luck up there, you know, and if you change your mind, you know, you know where to find us.
Congratulations, Mike, thanks.
And then, as you know, we have one other departure before your next city council meeting, and that is Community Development Director Carla Henderson, whose last day is on March 15th. So if you want to drop her line and say thank you, that would be most appreciated. Also want to mention a couple of upcoming events that want to make you aware of, remind you of, as well as our viewing public. And the first is the event being sponsored by the Human Rights Commission, Just Deeds and Beyond: The Legacy and Future of Housing Access for All. That is coming up next week on March 13th from 5:30 to 7:30 PM here at Civic Plaza. It will start with a meal, followed by a panel discussion. And we've got, as the moderator, Daniel Bergen, who is the executive producer and documentary filmmaker at Twin Cities Public Television. So we've got an excellent panel scheduled for that, so please, we'd, we'd love to have you there. Also invite your networks as well to join us for that event. And then a quick reminder about the 2024 State of the City Event, which is coming up this year on Wednesday, March 20th, at 11:00 AM to 1:15 PM at the Zawadi Center this year over at 1701 American Boulevard East. And the city manager and mayor will be doing a presentation again this year on how we are moving Bloomington forward with a number of new projects and initiatives. So please do, if you can, please do plan to attend. We would love to have you join us for that. And then I just had one other, this has been a sad day here at the city of Bloomington, and particularly in the Public Works Department, because we found out about the passing of our coworker, Matt Solar. Matt died in an ATV accident on Sunday morning. He was a traffic technician in Public Works. He started in the city in 2016. He's only 33 years old, married, lived in New Prague. Understand that he was really highly respected for the work he was doing, particularly in our signage area. So please do keep Matt, his family, friends, and coworkers in your thoughts these days. Thank you.
Thank you, and, and thanks for bringing that up, and yes, extend our condolences to, to Matt and Matt's family, and that it's a tragedy always to lose someone, and especially on a, in a department like Public Works, where I know there's been an unnatural, an odd number of folks that we've lost over the past few years in Public Works, and it's a, it's, it's, it's a tragedy. And I know it's affected the group, because it's a, it's a small, tight-knit group, so be sure to keep them in your thoughts and prayers. Counsel, before I open it up to everyone else here this evening, I, I do want to double back to our conversation regarding the Sindalars, and some information was sent out. Basically, as I said, this was regarding the Bloomington Home Buyer Mortgage Assistance Program, and it's a, it's a, up to $10,500 forgivable loan for down payment assistance in Bloomington, if you're Bloomington homebuyer and so on. There, at the highest level, there's two basic requirements, the homebuyer education requirement and one-to-one financial counseling completed at least 30 days in advance of closing. We heard tonight that just because of scheduling issues and all that was going on, and the attempt to try and get a closing date, that the Sindalars were not able to meet that 30-day requirement, and therefore were not eligible for the $10,500 forgivable loan. I promised, Mr. Sindalar, we would at least bring it up and talk about this. It's, we're, we're in a, we're in a tough spot here, as we don't meet for a couple of weeks now, and I think that we are pushing up against their closing deadline, and so if we asked for more information or to try and learn more about this, I think we're, we're bumping up against that reality, that I just don't know that, I don't know that we can meet that, so it would be a conversation that we need to have. So I would turn to our city attorney, or...
Just one clarification.
Yes, please, Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. I did, you know, I needed some clarification after the listening session, and they have completed the counseling. Like, they've completed it, they just didn't complete it within that 30-day timeframe. So they have met the requirements, it's just that one little kind of technicality that was beyond their control, because they reached out to the organizations that we list, and they couldn't get, they couldn't get it scheduled, because these organizations are over capacity, apparently. So it really feels like it's not, like they tried to do it the right way, and, and then also, and I, this would need to be verified, but it doesn't sound like, for other communities that have this type of program, including Minneapolis, it doesn't sound like they have that 30-day requirement, that it can be up until closing, and so maybe that's something, moving forward, we should look at for our policy, but I do hope there's... But I do hope there's something that we could do, make an exception or something tonight.
Ms. Manderscheid?
Mayor members, I thought it might be helpful to put together a motion for your consideration. I haven't run it specifically by Ms. Coleman, but I was able to get some information from her, or she was able to quickly provide me with some information. Seems like at a high level, there's two requirements, this homebuyer education and one-on-one financial counseling. They have to be completed at least 30 days before closing. There are specific guidelines that are available that are on our website, and I've provided that information to you in your email. Perhaps didn't have a chance to look at it, given we were actively meeting at the time. That said, as you mentioned, it is a little bit tricky to draft on the fly without knowing everything, so I put this together, you know, I have no pride of authorship here, just trying to move the situation forward. And this is what I got here. Motion to authorize appropriate staff to work with partner entities to seek to resolve the Sindalar's situation as described during the Listening Session regarding the advanced 30-day requirements, if possible, first part. And two, to direct appropriate staff to review the overall requirements of the program, homebuyer education program, and bring any revisions back to the requisite boards for subsequent action.
Given the amount of information that we have at our hands, and the knowledge of all this, honestly, I think this is about as far as we could take it, short of simply saying, nope, waive the 30-day requirement, and let them move forward with the loan forgiveness program. And I'm hesitant to do that, because we're working with incomplete information. But to do what Ms. Manderscheid kind of outlined in a motion there, to try and work toward resolution, direct staff to try and work toward resolution, and then take a look in retrospect, we need to figure this out, and maybe correct this moving into the future, to try and figure out a way that we could make this a bit more user-friendly, and maybe a bit more compatible, or a bit more consistent with other communities around us. Councilmember Lohman, thoughts?
Well, you know, so, just a couple of questions. So, if between now and when we meet next, there are other situations like this, does this open us up to anything? And then, you know, with that being said, you know, if there are other folks that are out there that have felt like, you know, obviously, if we look at that, you know, what would be the remedy for them? I guess my question is, what are we opening ourselves up by, you know, handing this off to staff, and, you know, for this one specific event, you know, trying to? And that's the thing I'm concerned about, is, you know, I'm very concerned about, I mean, I understand their situation, and I want to resolve that, but I also don't want to open up, open the city up to even more issues by doing this one, this one exception. So, I'm more interested in trying to resolve it for everybody, as opposed to just this one person. And that's where I am just, I'm a little bit nervous about going down there and just doing this to this one person, or this one couple, understanding that this is an example of our problem. And so, that's where I'm kind of, I want to be put at ease from that issue.
Appreciate that. I'm sorry?
Mayor members, the one thing that comes to my mind would be sort of a neutral finding in that they did attempt to seek to meet the requirements, but if they could provide some proof that it wasn't possible, given the availability of appointments, or some sort of, something that's neutral and specific to this particular situation, that's really the only thing I could think of off the top of my head here. It is, it is not, doesn't appear to be entirely accurate, that other entities don't have requirements related to timing. Again, with the available information and time that we have, it does appear that some other programs have time requirements as well, up to several months. So, if you think about it, timing such as this is important, because we want homeowners to be thinking about, are they ready? Are they prepared to be homeowners and have the requisite time to march through the process in getting their finances and other sorts of things in place in order to purchase a home and to make the decision about whether they're in a situation that they should be purchasing a home? I get that there are outliers, and this might be one of those. And I share your concern with creating sort of an on-the-spot situation, which is why the language that I drafted is both broad and specific, and authorizing staff to do something if something could be done, but again, being mindful of the uniqueness of this particular situation.
But is it just specific, though, to this one individual, though, the broadness of the language? And then, just one other question I thought of, as you said that, are we listed on here as the, and I assume that if we're not listed as a council, of if we wanted to do an appeal, that we would be that appeal? But as a part of this policy, are we included in that, in terms of if you wanted to appeal anywhere in the program? I didn't have a chance to look carefully in terms of that. Is that written anywhere?
Mayor members, with the time that's been available and the time that I've spent researching, I don't see any language in here regarding appeals. There's a, yeah, I don't, you know, it's related to eligibility and fund availability, and so, it isn't a guarantee, you know, there's some other language in here, but I don't see anything about appeals. And maybe, if others here have more information, I would obviously defer to them, but...
Councilmember DeLisandro, then Councilmember Rivas. Councilmember DeLisandro?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. To me, this feels, for lack of a better way to put it, somewhat arbitrary. And I agree with you in terms of, hey, if you're going to do, if you're going to do one-on-one financial counseling to confirm that you can, that you can afford a home and feel good about it, then that should be a prerequisite before the application process, as far as I'm concerned, right? It makes no sense to me that you would, like, you'd get through an application and approve somebody, and then tell them to go find out whether or not they should have a house, because they're already under contract for that house, right? I mean, I've, I don't know, I've bought and sold eight, 12 homes in my lifetime already, and those things happen in a very regimented order. And so, if we want to circumvent, or if we want to put a barrier to our program, in front of that, we should put it in the right place, in my opinion. So, that'd be one piece of advice. The second thing I would say is, this doesn't feel any different to me than a community member-initiated ordinance request change, where we oftentimes do the one-off for the person, and then go back and change the ordinance to accommodate. And I feel like that doesn't put us in risk, and we do it all the time on land issues and things like that. This doesn't feel like we're going to open up a can of worms for ourselves, in my opinion. And thirdly, I may be wrong about this, but it feels to me like we're all, like, nobody's, I've not heard anybody say, and we haven't heard from everybody, say, "Under no circumstances do I want this to be less than 30 days." And if that's true, then I think that we probably are in agreement, that we expect that this thing will probably get more relaxed or lenient over time, in which case, we're not, again, we're not opening ourselves up to anything, because we're anticipating that we'll have this process, or this ordinance changed to make it more comfortable for everybody. So, I feel very much for them. And let me just say one more thing. If we're going to put something like this in place, then we have the obligation to make sure they can get it. And what we basically said, in at least in the five minutes that I heard, was, "Good luck to you. Go find yourself your own counselor. We're not going to help you do that. And then, when you can't meet our timeline, we're going to tell you you can't have the money." And that doesn't feel good to me either. And I don't think that that was the intention, by all means, but that's the outcome, right? Which is, we left them to their own devices to try to find a way to make this happen. They got stonewalled, or not heard from, or whatever, and we didn't have, so if we, if that matters, then we should backstop that by saying, "There is a city-run program that will qualify you," so that no matter what happens, if they can't get it from an external party, we can solve their problem and get it for them within that 30-day limit. So, whatever we try to do here, I think that there's lots of ways we can make this much more user-friendly for folks. And I think we'll see an uptick in people using it, which I actually think is really great, because that means we're helping folks, especially young folks, find housing. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Rivas, and then Councilmember Nelson, and then I see our HRA Administrator on the line as well. So, let's start with Councilmember Rivas.
I should have let her speak before me, because I was just about to say almost the same things.
Like Mike.
The reality is that, in order for them to apply for this loan, they already went through all the loops to get a mortgage from the bank. So, at this point, I think the right thing to do would be to allow them to get it. I know there could be repercussions, but if, in the event that there were other people in the same situation within the next few days, I guess that would be something that we could discuss at the next meeting as well. But if we want to provide young couples the incentive to buy a home, and the city has made plans for that, this would be a good time to act on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. So, did a quick search here, Minneapolis requires three days. It used to require three months, and they changed it in 2022 to three days, just for whatever that's worth. I don't, maybe, we shouldn't always do what Minneapolis does. Just throwing things out. One of the things that I heard is that the individuals were told, this couple was told that this council set that, and I don't recall ever setting that requirement and/or reviewing that requirement. So, was that something that we actually discussed? Is that something within our purview?
I was hearing it as it was a City Council policy. Whether this council set it, or it was set 10 years ago, I don't know. I'm not sure. I see Ms. Coleman has joined us. Maybe she could shed a bit more light on this? And, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, can you hear me all right?
Actually, you're kind of, kind of low right now.
Okay, I'll try and talk closer and louder.
Much better. Thank you.
Okay. So, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. First off, yes, this is a City Council-approved guidelines that were brought before you in, I believe, 2021. This is a pilot program funded with American Rescue Plan Act dollars, which is why it is up to $10,500 forgiven by January 1st, 2027, of continued occupancy. So, the guidelines were actually approved by council, and so, any exception to the guidelines needs to be ruled on by council. In addition to the comments and questions that I have heard this evening, absolutely. Minneapolis did change one of their programs to three months, but they have multiple down payment assistance programs. That is neither here nor there at this point. The, every homebuyer or potential homebuyer that has tried to take advantage of this program have all been held to the same requirements. There have been seven homebuyers that have actually withdrawn, because they did not get the certificate in time. There has been at least one other household that has reached out and asked for an exception, the mortgage lender, and that was not approved. So, no, I do not believe you are opening yourself up to anything going forward, as there has been, as of December 31st, 2023, there has been over 20 households, and there's actually only enough for about 25. And so, if you do decide to allow an exception this evening, I would have to contact the Administrator to make sure that there is still funding available, as this funding is almost gone, and there is not an identified source for a permanent down payment assistance program. A permanent down payment assistance program would consider all of the feedback provided by lenders, realtors, current homebuyers, and those that were trying to use the program to better, better have a suited program for the City of Bloomington. However, there's no funding at this point, and if we did do a permanent down payment assistance program, it would probably, most likely, not be forgivable, which makes this funding more likely to be used and to have more pressure with it. In addition to the comments around the guidelines and that they need to find their own housing counselors, that is what was listed in the guidelines, when it lists that Homestretch, which is managed by the Minnesota Home Ownership Center, Framework, which is the online program managed by Minnesota Home Ownership Center, and Realizing the American Dream by Urban, excuse me, by the Urban League. Those are the homebuyer certifications that are eight-hour courses. Then it goes on to say one-to-one counseling, that is by either Minnesota Housing, that lists the Enhanced Homebuyer Counselors, or by the Community Mediation Restorative Services, which is another entity, or by the Minnesota Home Ownership Center, all of which list networks, which is why it is important when the realtors and the lenders are involved with the homebuyers. All that, I still say, it is up to this council. If you would like to provide an exception, then we will move forward with whatever this council decides.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Council, any questions of Ms. Coleman on this? Councilmember Lohman?
Sure. So, just so I'm clear, you had mentioned there are seven applications that are exhausted, and have, those have, they've lost their ability to bring forth a claim. This is the only one that's in the queue right now. All right.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, Councilmember Lohman, that is correct. Those seven were from 2023, between May, they had closing dates between May and September of 2023, and they moved on. They bought their houses, but they moved on from that.
Moved on without that, and we're not, that's, that can't be opened back up for any piece. Now, the second question that I have, these are federal dollars that we're dealing with here? Is that true?
Thank you, yes. This is American Rescue Plan Act dollars, where I provided, so, the City Council approved $250,000 for a down payment assistance program, because the council identified homeownership opportunities as a priority, but there was no funding to actually put a down payment assistance program in place. And so, this program is a pilot program to collect data and information to help inform a permanent down payment assistance program. And so, that's the $250,000 of American Rescue Plan Act dollars, and this council, at the same time, did a separate $250,000 for homelessness response and prevention services.
But these are, these are federal dollars, and then are there any requirements under, you know, housing discrimination, or anything we need to be concerned about as a council with respect to federal dollars that are coming to this city? I know that amount that you quoted, $250,000, I think that's under the amount that would make us eligible for some of those problems, but I just want to be sure that we're not walking ourselves into any other issues with federal dollars, if we make an exception to the rules that we have printed out in our guidelines here, if we make a change tonight. That's the thing I'm concerned about, that we're not going to get ourselves, run afoul of any federal policies or any rules with regard to making a change here for this one individual.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, Councilmember Lohman, these are federal dollars from the American Rescue Plan Act, which came out of the COVID-19 pandemic. Anything that we do at the city, whether, no matter the amount, we are not going to contribute to housing discrimination. We actually are going to follow laws of the state, of the city, and of the federal government. And so, in making an exception that this council has decided based on the guidelines that this council put in place, so if you're making an exception to your own guidelines, in my opinion, as an HRA Administrator, not a legal council, you are not violating any Fair Housing or Housing Act requirements.
So, Ms. Coleman, you had mentioned the seven applicants who didn't complete the process, because they didn't, they weren't within this timeframe, or for whatever reason. Is the only difference between those seven and the folks we're considering tonight, is the folks considering tonight came to our public Listening Session and voiced displeasure about this?
So, I want to, thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, I want to say that partially, from the other seven, I have not heard that they tried to attend counseling, and then there was delays due to backlogs of the housing counselors. So, if that is not a part of their story, then this would be the only difference.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson, were you raising your hand?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. In general, I think that relaxing this timeframe commitment makes sense as a policy change, but, you know, I wouldn't want to make that policy change right now, tonight. I'm struggling a little bit more with making the exception, to Councilmember Lohman's point, you know, yes, they're the only ones that asked, but were the other ones looking for it? Does that open us up to some type of discriminatory change, that we did it for one person, and we didn't do it for other people? Could there be some basis in that? Frankly think I, because, you know, they did make the ask, and it wasn't like we were asked to do this four times and only approved it one time. We've been asked one time, and if we approve it one time, I don't see how there can be discrimination. We approved it every time we were asked to do that. With that said, I mean, it kind of frankly, it reminds me a little bit about... frankly, it reminds me a little bit about getting married. I mean, I made a proposal. It was accepted for whatever reason, and after that, you know, we went to the counseling to decide if this was a good idea or not. And then the church said, yeah, it was fine that we got married, and it's worked out ever since. And so I see this similarly. I mean, you go there, you make your offer, you get that agreement, you go in there, I mean, the bank has reviewed this and said, hey, they're financially qualified to do this. And then you get counseling to make sure you're successful, to make sure you do it right, make sure, you know, you're living your life the way you should. You're putting your money where it should go, instead of, you know, where it shouldn't go. And that seems fantastic. I mean, for people that are getting their first house, to get that type of help, to make sure that not only did they qualify just because the bank wanted another loan, but to be successful in that, and to grow the equity, and to get all of the tremendous benefits of homeownership, I think, are super important. And so, you know, because it's one time, and we approve it one time, I'd support an exception for them, and try to find a pathway to get that done. Last question I have is just probably for the city attorney. Do we actually have to make that exception because we made the policy, versus giving staff the discretion to try to work something out?
You mentioned it.
Mayor members, yeah. I don't know all of the requirements of the American Rescue Fund grant compliance, or fund requirements. We would certainly want to make sure we stayed on the correct side of that, which is why the motion that I had put together would be not necessarily a per se waiver of this particular circumstance, with the information that you have, but rather authorization for the staff to work with the entities involved here, to seek to resolve this particular sindolar situation, if possible. And so I don't think that you're giving a per se waiver carte blanche right here, but rather authorizing staff to try and find a path forward, if possible. And under the circumstances, you know, neither Erica nor I have the regs in front of us right now, and it might be possible that there's something that says, no way, you should not, cannot do this. But it might be possible, and I think the motion that I put forward would give staff the opportunity to do so, if it's possible. Again, also with the caveat that there may not even be funds available yet. At this point, it sounds like that's a possibility too, in which case I'm sure Ms. Coleman will be looking into that in the morning, and it might be sort of a moot point, right? And then the last thing, again, would be to look at the overall requirements, and, you know, you've indicated that, that's of interest, and Ms. Coleman has indicated that, should there be funds available, should be, you know, take the research from this particular pilot and apply it, that we would wrap it up and do a larger rollout, too, so.
Councilmember Nelson, a follow-up?
Yeah, just a quick thing. So if I understand correctly, what you're suggesting is we would authorize staff to do this if it's legally permissible, if there's funds available, then yeah, go for it. Am I understanding that correctly?
Mayor members, that would be my recommendation. And Ms. Coleman, are you comfortable with that?
Thank you. Yes, I am. I just will add, there's nothing from the research that was done when we requested this, that is digging down into the American Rescue Plan Act dollars for this program, to say that you cannot do this. These are the rules that the city council approved. So these are not rules that came from the federal government in terms of this program. The city council approved these guidelines as presented to them. So you're making an exception to your own rules that you approved, that were not based on the source of the funds. The only thing that's based on the source of the funds is that they have to be completely expended and not back in the door by January 1, 2027.
Councilmember Loman, did you have an additional question?
I think my question was answered, that, you know, with what she said about the, so we wouldn't have enough for the seven people. I think that's my only other question that I had, if they somehow were to come back and ask us for that. So I think I'm good with how this is written.
Thank you. I mean, I would be, I mean, I'd be willing to bring this forward as a motion. I will say, I don't know that I support what we're doing, only because the other seven didn't come forward, and I just feel there's a fairness issue. And they didn't come forward, perhaps they didn't know they could come to the listening session, maybe they had something going on that evening. For whatever reason, they didn't bring their concerns forward to the council. And I just, I just think from a fairness and from an equity issue, equity perspective, I don't know that I would support this. But, that being said, Ms. Manderscheid, do you want to read that again, or do you want me to, do you want me to read it? What would be best here?
I was riffing off of the words I put on here, so you can certainly read it if you'd like. I would encourage you to maybe do a little bit of on-the-fly editing.
Senator, would you feel differently if we brought all seven of those together with this one?
I don't think that's possible, because they've already finalized their loans. Or, yeah.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, I understand your question of fairness, but I would also say that they came to us by, per the recommendation of the administrator here, who instructed them to do that. They were working within the system, and it sounds to me like Ms. Coleman would have offered that to the other seven, but they then decided not to continue. So I don't think that there's a fairness issue here, in my opinion, anyway, because that escalation was, made an option by the administrator for them, and so they just had to take them up on that. I fully believe that Ms. Coleman would have said the same thing to every one of the other seven, should they have asked if there was another recourse.
And I agree with that. I don't know if you saw the original email. I mean, the emails did come forward, and again, I don't know if those other seven even thought, they realized they couldn't do it within the 30 days, and so they threw up their hands and walked away. You know, and I don't know if they did that, or what the circumstances were, and it just makes me a bit uncomfortable to think that we're leaving somebody behind.
Thankfully, the right answer to that is to get rid of those 30 days, right?
Exactly.
Yeah, thanks.
Counsel, I'm going to offer this up and look for somebody to make this motion, to authorize appropriate staff to work with partner entities, to seek to resolve the specific situation regarding the 30-day advance notice requirements, if possible, as it relates to the sindolars that we have been talking about, and to direct appropriate staff to review the overall requirements of the program and bring any revisions back to the requisite boards.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Carter, and a second by Councilmember Nelson regarding this. Any additional conversation? Councilmember Delasandro?
I just have a quick question. Given the fact that most likely this particular loan, or this program outlay will exhaust the funds, is it appropriate for us to ask them to go back and review the pilot program, or what we asking them to do is bring a proposal for an ongoing program that would correct some of these issues?
That's a good point, and I think, yes, that would be my preference, if this program is ending, which we heard it is, to try and, to bring back an alternative program, but then also bring back a funding option, too. You know, suggestions for a funding option, and it's incumbent on the council, then, I think, to find that money somewhere and to do that, because we've, I think, without question, we know that this is a good program, that this is a worthwhile program for homebuyers in Bloomington. Councilmember Loman?
So, Mayor, I just want to understand where you're at on this right now. I just want to have a real clear understanding where you're at, you know, as our leader.
Oh, and as I said, I'm just, I'm uncomfortable with the fact that the seven ahead of this group didn't do the same thing, and we don't know why. Perhaps they didn't know they could. Perhaps their realtor decided not to send off a snotty-gram to Ms. Coleman and the HRA. You know, for whatever reason, they just decided, they got, within those 30 days, realized they couldn't meet the deadline, and so they stepped away from it. And if they had known it was an option, would they have done it? You know, would they have come forward to the council? So I'm just, I can count noses. I can see we've got enough votes to pass this, and I'm comfortable with that. Personally, I just, from an equity and from a fairness standpoint, I think I'm going to say no thank you to this, but it's not in any way a reflection of the sindolars, their request, anything that they're looking to do. It's more of a fairness issue. We have a motion and a second on this, as stated. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? So passes 5-2, with Bussie and Loman in opposition. So, Ms. Coleman, thank you for jumping on late in the evening here and helping us out to get to a resolution on this. Appreciate it, and appreciate the meeting that you'll be having with these folks and trying to work toward a resolution on this. So thank you so very much.
Thank you, and just a point of clarification really quick. So I can go back to the administrator and ask them to review again, based on the council ruling this evening, for that one household. Can I also ask them that, for whatever remaining funds there may be, and I don't know, at last count, I think it was last week, it was like less than five, are you looking to remove the 30-day requirement for the remaining households that may come through, for this pilot program?
I don't think that's what we voted to approve this evening. I think we would rather have a more comprehensive discussion on that, beyond the pilot program, looking for your experience, looking for your recommendations if we move beyond a pilot program, whether or not there should be that 30-day, whether or not there should be any other changes, and then also looking for the recommendation, or looking for an idea of what a right amount of money would be, and then it's up to the council to try and find that money.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. You, too. Ms. Manderscheid, are we clear on everything here?
I believe so, Mayor. I provided the words that you spoke to Ms. Mercer, so we have those in the record.
Very good. Thanks for the conversation on that, Counsel. I think it was good to have, and an important conversation, but I'm glad we can help out the sindolars on this. Counsel, is there anything else on our council issues update? Councilmember Loman, and Councilmember Delasandro. Councilmember Loman?
So just real quick, I know that we've had a number of different events that have taken place across the country, in terms of a snowstorm in California, and then wildfires in Texas. And so one of the questions that I have, in particular, about, you know, as we move towards spring and the summer, and that we continue to be, in a sense, in a drought, I kind of throw this to the city manager a little bit, have there been any preparations or other things that we need to do to put our city in the best position to be sure that we're ready for any of these, you know, seemingly things that are, you know, I like to call them climate-related, but that are just down the pike, and, you know, they're coming. I know that's part of the work that's done with our, you know, with our public health group, but, you know.
Mayor and Councilmember Loman, I did discuss that with our fire chief today, and he is preparing a response.
Councilmember Delasandro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to express my thanks to Faith and the Office of Racial Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging for a really lovely Welcome to Bloomington program that happened on March 2 at Nine Mile Brewing. Thank you also to the folks at Nine Mile for taking good care of us. They opened up their doors an hour earlier than they normally do, so that we could have that really cool program. It was well-attended, and it's continuing to grow in its value. For those of you who don't know about it, Welcome to Bloomington is a chance for new residents to learn about the city and get to know some neighbors as well in the process. The reason I bring it up here is not just to say thank you, but also because I would like to encourage city council members to attend them, if you can. I've asked them to be put on calendar, city council calendars, so that we all know when they're happening. I actually, because I was there, I actually got up and did an impromptu dog and pony about the city, and it was really fun to help people understand how the city government is organized, what our roles are, and, you know, and go from there, which is, in most people's opinion, easier for folks to understand than if somebody who isn't part of that was, you know, just reading off a slide, for example, and all. So I highly encourage you to do that, and certainly would love for you all to be ambassadors of that program. It was really fun, and I got to meet some really cool people, including several people who have come up to me, came up to me afterwards, and asked about boards and commissions and things like that. And the leadership program, and I pitched the Police Citizens Academy, and we just had a lot of fun talking about stuff. So, yeah, please, really, really encourage you to take a look at your calendar and see if you can make some of those.
Thanks for being such a good ambassador for the city and the city council.
It was a lot of fun.
Councilmember Carter?
Just on a similar note, I feel like there are so many meetings and opportunities, events, and it's really hard to, it's really easy for them to get lost in email. And I know last week, SFAH had a document that we could all sign up, and like, it was super helpful. But I'm just wondering if we could just, like, maybe consistently get meetings added, like, these events added to our calendars as a council, or have a calendar that is, like, council meeting and events, that we could open on our calendar and see all of the things that are going on. Because I know there's been several events over the past couple of months that I'm like, I had no idea that was happening. No idea, because if you miss, you know, a one-weekly, or, you know, wherever, like, there's just not one consistent place that they're all, or maybe they are in the one-weekly, but it's just really easy when we're, obviously, all of us have day jobs and families, and like, it's just really easy for these things to get missed. And so, and then also, like, you know, if there is an expectation for us to speak or say words, just to make that clear, and what are, like, what's our key message for that audience. But that's kind of a deeper level.
I looked down the dais here, and I looked at Ms. Mercer and think, you don't have to respond now, but I put your thinking cap on and figure out the best way that we could handle this, to make sure that all of these, these many things that we have going on, get on the council's calendars.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, there's actually a city council calendar email that every member of staff can send it directly to, so they don't have to go through SFAH to do that. And so I encouraged the folks that I was with to say, it's called councilcalendar, I think, at BloomingtonMN.gov, and they can send it. They just include us in their calendars that they're putting on staff calendars and everything else, and then we get it on a group calendar, and that's what we can, correct. Yeah, and we can decline it, obviously.
Yeah, that's what I'm envisioning. At least the invite is there, and you can say yes or no to it.
Correct, correct. But there's an email address that they can use to put it on that council calendar for us.
And I don't know if that would cover everything, but I think you're right, but that might still leave some things out, considering...
Sure. If they're not sending invites anywhere, then they need to make a special case for us. That's true.
And if I may, if I know of the event, I am putting it on the council calendar. So all of the events that I've had in my chart, they are on the calendar.
Good to know.
Great, thank you.
Good, thank you. Counsel, is there anything else? Seeing no other hands going up, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this evening.
So moved.
We've got a motion. We have a second? We've got a second. Motion by Councilmember Carter, second by Councilmember Rivas to adjourn this evening. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Always motion carries 7-0. We are adjourned. Thank you, Counsel, for the discussion this evening. Thank you to staff for your work, and everybody who's joined us, both in person and online. Have a great rest of your week. Thanks.